Corn, how are you?
Good.
Might as well get going. It's five thirty-seven. We'll call this work session to order. Gnome City Council, October twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five. I guess tonight's topic is taxi cabs. What I'm attempting to do, and you can thank me at the end of this, I'm sure, but, you know, we have a number of outstanding issues I know that you guys have dealt with over the years and months. And, you know, I went through, this year passed me, and I'm gonna give you, and I hope it's okay, I would like to give you just like two minutes of what I see in the attorney's here. Does everybody know, Sam?
Most of you, I think. Hi, Sam Severn, the owner that firmly represents the city.
So if I say something wrong, he's got some, just hit me. But, a couple things. First of all, you have a draft of what staff, when we talked to the attorney, something we would like you to look at. We're not saying this is a final or whatever, but it's something to look at. Obviously, it needs, we need to get this done because it is a regular event in the clerk's office of problems. The problems of non-payment of sales tax by the contractors that work for the operator. I have a real concern about lack of enforcement and our inability to do it as a staff and not enforcing those things. It gives me, I kind of stand back and go, then what kind of negligence or liability falls on the city if we don't do that enforcement? In looking at it, I will tell you, some, one of my recommendations is to get rid of cab license and only have chauffeur's license. You rarely see the cab licenses anymore. You see the chauffeur or a driver's type license for cabs, particularly in the lower Need to simplify it. You know, it's complicated, there's some things that I think are misunderstood, or we look at it and go, well, that's the spirit of the ordinance. Well, is it? So I think there's some places we need to look at that, too. This is two words, monopoly, I do feel like, quite frankly, that our, the one we have now does not allow for free enterprise. I think that's a situation that someone could look at us and say, well, you've put us in this, that I'm another taxi service. And I will tell you, in this case, it's demand, you know, supply and demand, that if somebody wants to open another taxi or cab service, then so be it. It's a competitive market. So anyway, there's just thoughts I had, and I just want to throw them out there, right, wrong, or indifferent. That's what I read, and then talking to individuals and to staff about some of those things. So I really wanted to just open it up, you know, so that we can look at putting this thing, you know, to bed, you know, as quickly as possible because we keep getting things from RJ and from Longley and asking questions, and we have not. And I really would like to try and do that, or help you try and do that. So some of it is, I'd like to hear about your concerns about the ordinance, what we have today, what you see, the problems, what we need to work on, what I need, the lawyers and Dan, to help put together what we think is reasonable for this service. So obviously, there's a need here. You know, who does it? City manager doesn't care. You know, I don't think that's the issue. The ability to open up other cab services, why not? Again, that's just free enterprise, and I'm not being flippant about it, I'm just saying, from looking at those things. So if you guys can help me with what have concerns have been with council, you know, I thought it'd be a good time to talk so we can continue to move this forward. You know, I'm sure once we have, you know, hearings and things on this, we're gonna, we've got some folks who are coming and talking, I'm sure, and that's fine, but how, and in some cases, might have to find some compromise. So thoughts on cab service, how you would do it, how you don't want to do it, but just trying to, you know, Mr. Mayor, find a way to get it done and get it behind us. So, and if you say, Lee, we don't want to do it, then I'd go, okay, so what are you gonna do? So I've not been involved in these conversations in the, with you guys, so what's your really discussion on what do you want to do? I know everybody has a slight smile but doesn't really want to smile, so that's okay. What do y'all think?
That'd be good, I bet. And it'll make it easier for everybody else to join in.
Yeah. Yeah, the, go ahead.
Other municipalities that do that, do they have a cap on them?
No.
They don't, right?
Maybe Mark found something that...
A cap?
Oh, yeah.
How many?
Twenty.
Yeah.
I didn't see one.
Yeah. I mean, it's all based on demand.
Yeah.
You know, if you came in and said, you know, I want a new service here, and you'll say, well, it's being accommodated, okay? Or if you begin to see where cabs can't respond and there's additional demand, somebody else could come in and capture, or the existing one expands, but that's free market, somebody have to, yeah.
Yeah, I think Bethel has, like, they have over a hundred cabs.
Oh, yeah, there's...
I think, uh, that they have the highest cab per capita rate in the, in the United States, if not the world.
The gentleman from, we were at the tax conference, I asked, and they said that they're not gonna believe it.
And there is no, I think the only restriction in Bethel is you have to belong to a dispatch service.
Right.
I think, but, but they have a very, I think they actually have a transportation commissioner or something like that that's supposed to enforce, you know, so...
See, I've always had a transportation...
So if the city's goal is to not have to enforce...
Yeah.
And kind of throwing it wide open might have unintended consequences.
Could, and probably would. That's why, you know, what I had to look at is there needs to be, in, as far as I'm concerned and what I know, is some requirements as to safety, you know, background checks on drivers, but that would come along with, you know, when they submit to get these chauffeur's license, they'd have to have the background checks. We can do those at P D, you know?
And those are currently done now, I would imagine, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Because that's one of the requirements, under the current regulatory structure.
One of the issues with the background checks is the troopers normally do it, N P D is telling everybody they cannot do background checks, that they are not allowed to do it. They've been saying that for over a year, and they were doing it beforehand, and I, I don't know where the...
I don't know where it's coming, but that's not correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah. I think that the chauffeur's license requirements could be amended to envelop some of those safeties, like the chauffeur's operating a cab that meets certain standards, like what's written in the current taxi cab license ordinance. The chauffeur's license is a little bit restrictive in its timelines, that this has to be done within X amount of days of this thing, otherwise, like, the whole application gets invalidated. I, and Brad would probably agree with me, I don't think it's written well. I think that we need to do a revision to the chauffeur's license at the very least, but if we're gonna make a, a change, when I was, Mark had graciously sent us copies of, you know, codes for some of the other municipalities, which I was able to look up and present hyperlinks in your packets for those. And what I noticed is that in lieu of having taxi cab licenses themselves, like we do, they put their enforcement more in, like a permit, but there isn't a cap on any of the permits. Anybody can apply for a permit and receive them as long as they meet the standards that are outlined in the permit.
So what about this, under the current regulations, what is the, what pieces of the city enforcement is a problem? You know, or a challenge, or the city doesn't want to enforce, or it takes too much time, or what part of the enforcement piece of it are you wanting to get rid of it, or all of it? Like, I mean, I would think there's some stuff like, you know, the safety...
What is the problem?
Yeah, what is the problem? I mean, I understand that you got to competing...
The biggest problem is the person that owns the one company does not pay on time. We've done numerous payment agreements that it defaults on, and, you know, yes, he gets them paid off once we start pushing them. I know since I've been here, there is a payment arrangement before I started, and he finally paid that one off, and there was another one that we started, he defaulted on, but he finally finished paying that one off, but now with the current ones, he's behind again for both companies that he owns.
So is there remedies within the current ordinance for whatever, if it's, you know, lack of payment of sales tax, or whatever the issue is, does the current ordinance structure have a remedy for those violations?
Look, to you guys that are more, the same thing on the sales tax by...
A lot of people that don't comply with city ordinances, but there's typically a remedy for non-compliance, right?
We cite them, we lean against their property, that things go into foreclosure...
So is there remedies within the existing taxi cab ordinance for violations?
Same.
Or is it the city just doesn't want to enforce those?
I don't think it's not want to, some of it is staff time, some of, you know...
Well, yeah, I mean, that's what I'm trying to get to, is what's the, what's the rub, or what's the problem?
I'm trying to pull it up right now, but just from, the internet's slow, but just from memory, I believe the remedies are generally there. I think the last time we encountered it, there was a lack of will by council to enforce them, and that was a different makeup, different set of circumstances, but enforcement of something like that requires a certain amount of work, too, staff energy, but if the, if it were truly lack of remedies, that's also pretty easy to fix. We can make sure that it corresponds to a citation in the uniform citation code. Just about every violation of code in Gnome is set up like most cities, where you can move for an injunction, and that's supported within the code, so I, I believe the remedies are actually there. Don't think that's...
Or a lack of will?
I think so.
Whether it's the council, whether it's administration, is that fair?
Can we have you come sit up here, please?
Sure.
Please?
Sure, or stand here with the microphone.
Somewhere.
Here, over right here.
Yeah.
Sure, I'm trying to pull it up, so that, oh, thanks, I'm gonna get it.
It seems like the problems I've seen that arisen is because the city has not enforced the current statutes, the current ordinances on the books, and there, and so people have gotten into a habit of non-compliance.
Yeah.
And then when the city does start to enforce the, the ordinances that are on the books, then it's like, oh, wait a minute, you know? And so really, the culpability is kind of on the city.
It is.
And so is the recommended solution, well, we don't like enforcing the rules, so we're just gonna get rid of the rules? Or is there something else? That's what I'm trying to...
Well, some of it is just like having the, you know, the cab license, you know, do we need to have those? Most don't do that. Now, that can be an amendment, but also, if, you know, based on what you would like to see and what the community wants to see, to, there are times I hate to rewrite an ordinance, sometimes I'm like, okay, look, let's...
It's a lot of work.
Let's, yeah, let's put in what we want, what we can do. And, and, yeah, and I appreciate that about, you know, we obviously have limited team in the clerk's office, they're doing multiple things, but when you, what I, you guys correct if I'm wrong, what I sense is a real frustration with our, our team trying to enforce these things. You know, people just don't respond, they're like, no. Well, then, okay, do we want to dive deeper into the enforcement and penalties and all that? Well, if that's what the ordinance says, that's what we have to do. But I do think, based on what I've seen, it can be done better. Sales tax from the contractors, do we get that? For the most part, they're, they are better...
Since I've been here.
From the drivers you're talking to?
Yes, 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 that's, I'm sorry. And...
I keep saying contractors.
Oh, you know, my, my biggest thing is, you know, when we try to contact the owner of this company, he just excuses after excuses after excuses. Don't worry, I'll be in there and pay for it, just like, what was it, three weeks ago, he was having an issue with the local gov system. They found out what the issue was, they told him, okay, you can start filing. He hasn't touched it since, so it's, and then if I try to push on him, then he's saying I'm being rude, I'm not doing, he's called me Hitler a few different times because I'm doing my job, he's like, well, Hitler did his job, too. And it's just frustrating that I am trying to work with this guy, and he does not want to do what we're asking him, it's just over and over and over. It's, since I've been here, the four years I've been working with this.
It's, it's tough because we represent a city administration that replaced a different city administration, and so however they used to do things, I mean, we're trying to do things the right way, by my...
That's a good thing.
But it's tough because if I would have been enforcing all those rules, our cab company would have shut down.
And is there remedies if the cab company shuts down? There's remedies where, yes, there is, where the city council reissues new permits or medallions or whatever that's...
Well, but we tried to do that, and we didn't get any traction from the city council.
The problem, well, as I recall, you know, the, the challenge, the concern that I had is the city had not enforced the existing statutes on the books, and they just wanted to issue new permits without enforcing the, the, the ordinance as it is on the existing operation. And it was, it was kind of like, well, it's too difficult to start enforcement, so we're just gonna issue a bunch of new permits without going through the steps that are clearly laid out in the ordinance, and one of those was determining the economic viability of multiple cab operations.
I thought also one of those was compliance. I thought also one of those was compliance by the current companies.
Great.
And it, no, it's well past that.
So has it...
Was it a hundred and twenty day, ninety day period? And, I mean, we started talking about this a year ago.
So, sorry.
It's been that long.
So is the current cab company in compliance?
No.
Is there remedies to correct that?
Sam, do you want to pull the license?
Jump out, rabbit, huh?
That's what I'm asking. Yeah, I mean, I mean, I'm not saying I don't necessarily support a change in the ordinance, I'm just asking, are we enforcing the standards or the requirements that are currently on the books? That's the only thing I'm asking.
But is our, is our ordinance even worthwhile anymore? Because we can have Lyft and Uber coming and do it, and we can't do anything about it, we can't enforce anything on them, so there's other places that can come up that we have no control over, and a lot of places do not have cab company, have the taxi, like, cab license anymore. Is there a real reason to keep it?
Can I ask a question, Scott? One thing you said...
Sure, yeah, I'm just asking question.
Yeah, 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 because I don't know what I don't know, but when we talk about, and I think I've talked, I think I may have talked to the lawyers about this, on the economic viability, why would we do that?
Because it's in the ordinance.
Okay.
Anytime the city council issues new permits, they have to consider the economic viability of, of that decision of issuing new permits. So for example, how many permits are there in Gnome? Five?
Six, seven.
Eleven, but we didn't put out the other ones.
There was eleven, and then I think the operator, so right now, right.
Yeah.
Right.
Six current, right, six current, but eleven in the ordinance?
There's six current with only three operational cabs of those six.
So there's five that were issued previously that were revoked.
Yeah, and not being argumentative, I guess the thing, yeah, 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 when I look at the economic viability, who, who are we to say for a, let's say it's two restaurants, say I'm opening a restaurant, no, why would we do that versus that's, that's their problem?
Because it's in the Gnome Code of Ordinances, Lee. It's, it's stipulated in there, you could probably pull it up.
That'd be the first thing I take out.
So I know he's aware of what I'm talking about.
Yeah.
And that was the big issue last time, that there'd been no understanding, evaluation, or analysis to say, okay, if we issue five more permits...
Yeah.
Can, is this community and is the, the cab industry in, in Gnome large enough and robust enough to support eleven permits? And nobody could answer that question.
And while we've been doing this, going back and forth, we've had people waiting twenty, thirty minutes, forty minutes for cabs, and we've been failing our citizens by not doing, by just taking, not taking any action at all.
Yeah, I, I'm not, I'm not arguing for, against any changes here, I'm just asking.
But it's in there, it's in there, but I will tell you, that's one of the things I'd wind up taking out, because I just don't think that's our responsibility, but...
Well, then, then that would require, you know, a change, but that is clearly in the ordinance, so we can't just start...
Exactly.
Oh, we don't like this requirement, so we're just gonna pretend it doesn't exist.
No, we...
You know what I mean?
Do we want to do another payment arrangement with a person who's defaulted over his last two? That's what my concern is, I mean, he's, he keeps defaulting on these arrangements that we do with him.
And what's, what's the remedy?
So, can I get a word in here, Lee?
Yes, sir.
Sure, Mark, go ahead, some more.
Oh, sorry, Mayor, I've been looking for, looking for where you can put your hand up to do it, but I can't find it, but anyway, the current city administration, I appreciate what they're, what they're going through, because they basically inherited this problem, you know, from several years ago, you know, Scott's been on the council for quite a while, and understands, we've talked back and forth about this, and then, and then Corn and Maggie were, and, and Adam also, you know, we've talked about this, but I appreciate Lee wanting to do something that would help fix the problem. I kind of, personally, I think we're kind of talking about two different things between the licensing of cabs and the ordinance for cabs and the sales tax issue. I think the sales tax issue, which I know concerns the city's, city clerk staff, because it keeps you defaulted on, and there's no, and then they, you know, get frustrated because they don't feel like there's a remedy about, with it, but I also agree with Scott, we do have remedies, already set in ordinance to do that, but, but that whole issue started when we chose to go to online sales tax collection instead of having a person, person in the staff. Brad, I see you shaking your head, you weren't there then, so you don't know.
I was here when we...
So I can tell you that for a fact, I can tell you that for a fact because I know that, 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 and this previous city clerk staff that let, let go of the driver's requirements to, to stay on top of them, to be, you know, to basically be turning their sales tax things, and I don't, I applaud you guys for getting them to, you know, onto the online system, because that's what we have now, so, but, and I'm not causing, saying that's your fault, I'm saying that, that all the staff here now inherited this problem from previous administrations, including a pretty, previous council that we didn't, you know, we weren't able to really deal with, that are, come up with a different solution. So I appreciate everybody trying to come up with a solution to, to remedy it. Personally, I think that if we do any changes, that we, if, if we're gonna issue a license that we have to in some way protect the public, if we're issuing a city license that you have to have insurance, commercial insurance on your cabs, and you have to have background checks, whether it's the city police doing it, or the troopers, those are mandatory requirements, because that's protection of the public, and if we can't, if we are, can't see, and I know other, I asked for the other municipalities' information be sent along, which, which, which Dan did, because a lot of the same, you know, the Bethel and Cops view and, and Barrow all have things in place, in fact, some of them look basically very similar to Gnome's, so it's not like Gnome is doing something different, it's just that we've been having a problem, you know, we've been having numerous problems, but what, that problem of how to deal with whether, one thing, like I said, economically viable, I kind of agree with Lee, how do we really determine that, whether it's economically viable for a cab to operate or not? I think we can kind of already see that there's, with the current economy, that it's difficult to keep three or four cabs on the road, which is not economically viable to do that. Used to be used to have ten different cabs on the road, but other things have changed, so it's maybe not viable to have that many. Do we limit the number, do we limit the number, or do we put stringent, stringent requirements that they have to adhere to, the insurance and background checks, and compliance with other laws such as sales tax, that would basically eliminate people who aren't gonna comply with that, but then it'll open up the market more to make sure that, that other people are complying, and I can tell you, people who want to drive, some other people who want to drive probably won't be able to adhere to compliance issues either, they probably won't be able to get a license. So, anyway, I think that's, I think I agree we need to do something to help back the city staff to trying to remedy a problem. I think there's a lot of stuff already in our ordinance that we're not utilizing, and I want to talk with Dan, you know, one of, one, some of the outfits, or some of the other cities use different committees that, basically, the cab permit, applications go to the committee, such as possibly our safe, public safety committee, and it's run through committee for application process, instead of just directly to the, to the city clerk. That's, you know, there's another possible remedy, to task, task a different committee to deal enough that, you know, the port, when you put a boat in the port, my understanding is that the, if you're a fisher of the port, you gotta have a certain commercial insurance for a fishing boat to, to be able to operate there, and that helps protect the city and help protect, protect the boat, boat owner also, and the public.
So you just...
I think, I think, and I guess the question is, do we want to stay at the same ordinance? Do we want to tweak, tweak that in order, and then start, and basically comply, having people comply with it? Do we want to open up more ability for other people who want to apply for those? I guess that's the question, or do we want to do something different, like Lee is suggesting, to not have that type of permit system, but have a permit system that, that requires the driver to, to apply to the city directly as a chauffeur's license? But I still think you need whoever's owning the cab to have the proper insurance and make sure it's a viable vehicle on the, on the street if we're gonna give a license for it.
Isn't that already a part of the chauffeur's license?
The only thing that's missing on our current chauffeur's license is a spot for insurance. We, we have it in there for the background check, for a driving record, medical record, so basically everything but the insurance, I think, needs to be added to the chauffeur's application.
Right, I guess one of the themes I was just, just as, as I'm listening, that I've noticed is there's, as Mr. Shaw was speaking, too, there's a, regulating the market component versus a protecting public safety component, and we could, I mean, those are two different focuses, right? Right now, there's a lot of regulating the market, and I hear some questions about whether that's necessary or best interest, but the protecting the public component presumably could be handled through the chauffeur's side of it to make sure, I mean, that, aside from regulating the market and determining the amount, right amount of cabs, that's a hard determination.
This is work session, there's no public comments.
No.
Yeah, there's no public comment on work session.
So, can I talk in order and where it goes?
Yeah.
Not in work session.
I just suggest that to frame the conversation, as I'm listening, I see there's a kind of two different divides, and this draft ordinance, which was just very much a conceptual, it just largely gutted the regulation of the number of cabs and just kind of removed that, but did not touch the chauffeur section, that would need to be modified, but that's the part that the traveling public has some, not the city's obligation, really, in a legal sense, the city's taken... The city's taking that on, but that desire to protect just the traveling public, so that you know that if you get in a cab, it's at least somebody who has some reasonable driving record or something. That could be left intact while getting out of this regulating the market sort of concept. So, kind of a couple of different threads. I guess I'm just noticing that as the conversation goes on. Did want to touch on the enforcement piece, because you asked a good question. It could always be improved. I'm sure you look at a twenty-year-old code, you could probably find pieces. But there's revocation of the license, which is very much an option. Fines, which if those aren't adequately dealt with, sometimes codes just need to dot some i's and cross some t's and put some things up in the chart, that would take an hour of work. So that, I mean, there are things, and a suit for injunctive relief is always an option. And frankly, not that, it's not necessarily the nuclear option that it may appear suing somebody. But if they're not following the code, there's a civil enforcement method. So I mean, I, I think, subject to some improvement, those mechanisms are there, just to answer the question, I guess. Whether that's route we want to be going is a different question, but they are, they do exist.
Have any permits been revoked since our last meeting? Are we at a point where they should be?
Yes.
Then why don't we take that up?
Okay.
I mean, is that what's, I mean, because that was, my understanding is that the current cab owner had through the summer season, through the barge season, to get all, is it five or six, six permits inspected? A vehicle attached to every, are we there?
No, he's not there.
Okay, and so basically the deadline that was given has passed?
Yeah, it's passed.
There's remedies for that, correct?
Right. At no point did I feel like there was any kind of direction that that's where we were gonna go as we're booking.
Well, I mean, that's kind of what. I mean, I don't envy your job at all, Dan, for sure, and that's not what I'm, you know. But there is a remedy in place if these deadlines are not met. Which is different from where we were, was it last spring, when we had the, all the discussion about it? Because there hadn't been any really enforcement up to that point. There's been more enforcement since then. That's my only point, you know, it's like, we can change the ordinances as much as the council wants. But until we do that, let's enforce the current ordinances on the books. I mean, does anybody disagree with me on that, or?
I don't know.
I mean, that's, that's much more straightforward than throwing everything, you know, out the window.
You just keep upgrading to a bigger state, and that's, that's a big, you go, look, you can't operate if you're gonna do this.
I mean, and that's the remedy for this market regulation. If there's, if the permits are not being, you know, inspected, the vehicles inspected, complied with, all the rules of sales tax, everything else. There is a remedy in place in the existing ordinances. We just have chosen not to exercise that yet.
How many times have this, has this come up, and it just hasn't?
But the council hasn't acted on it, because, you know, we haven't been asked to. All we've been asked to do is through, issue more permits without making sure the current permits are in compliance. Is that correct?
Issue the current, issue the premise that should have been issued a long time ago. Is that, that was what we were asked to do.
Yep. I, I, yeah, I, I agree.
And the council has just come with a constant inaction and not doing anything and not making anything.
Because there was no history of enforcement by the city for us to act on. That's, that's, and that's what we're doing here again. Now, we've got some enforcement behind us, right, for the last six months, right? I am much more comfortable acting on enforcement measures as long as the city's doing its part in, in enforcing the requirements. And that wasn't the case six months ago. That appears to be the case now, correct?
Yes. It's better than it was.
Because it's hard for the council to make decisions without a history of enforcement by city.
By the city.
That's, that's a different scenario now, right?
Well, being no, no different than putting a new out there, not enforcing it. I mean, you know, so I guess from our standpoint is, you know, we all are gonna take heat for it. I don't have a problem with that. If that's what the ordinance says, we do it.
The city's always gonna take heat on enforcement.
Well, welcome to the world.
Yeah, exactly.
So here's my question now. Why couldn't we do both when we had first talked about this? Why couldn't we have issued more permits and held the ones that were currently available to our standard that we have now? Why couldn't we have done both then? Because now we're in a situation where we might not have a cab, period.
Yeah.
If we revoke the licenses we have now and not issue new ones.
How long is it gonna take for us, if we revoke them, to bring out, put them out to uh, the bid or the, to the lottery? It's gonna take a while, and we don't have anybody. We should have done this a long time ago. But if we repeal this and open it up and make it easier to get into, and then tweak the chauffeur's license, I think that'd be better for, better for our citizens.
Well, I also think too, we're talking about public safety. It's, we're getting darker and darker every day. It's getting colder every day. Like, my concern is that we have no cabs, and then we have people walking from places where they need to be. You know, it's dark, a lot of our winter gear is black, you know, they're oftentimes not very good reflectors. Like, that's what I'm concerned about, is people not being prepared to change and act on this adequately. Because this might not be a resource that I use every day, but it is certainly for some people. And that's, like, if we're talking about public safety, like, you know, it's getting pretty close to below freezing. And people are gonna be waiting outside. So that's my kind of question, is why couldn't we have done both when we had first talked about this, issue new permits? And also hold both or all of the companies presented accountable at the same time?
Good question. Can I, so the question came up, I think Corin asked it. If we revoked permits due to non-compliance of the ordinance, how long would it take to reissue new permits? Because that's what the ordinance basically calls for. How long would that process take?
I don't remember off the top of my head. It's outlined in ordinance how the.
It's kind of like a drawing, right?
Yeah, it's a drawing.
I would assume that it, if.
But it has to be noticed within a certain amount of time, so I would expect that it's at least two weeks.
And then people have to, if they are considering this, they have to have a chauffeur's license to even apply for a permit? Or a license? You can do all that afterwards?
Yeah, they'd default on it. If they couldn't get all the requirements met, then it would be revoked.
There's, there's currently six active uh, permits, or six permits that are potentially active. And it's what I heard, there's three of them are active and three are not active?
Six are active, three, but there's only three vehicles.
That are actually being used. There's only three that have been issued.
So is that grounds for revocation of three permits then?
Yeah.
Per the ordinance, again, not cutting corners, but. And how long would that, assuming that happens, how long would that process take? Two to four weeks, it sounds like.
Revoking?
Well, just the revocation, I mean, that's an administrative decision, correct? It's the council that requires, and the council's required to issue the new permits, correct? Administration can revoke permits due to non-compliance of ordinance, but the city council has to approve the reissuance of those.
For lots, yeah.
Permits, right?
Yeah.
How long does that take? I mean, assuming that's, you know, I would think that would take less amount of time than basically taking the whole, rewriting the entire code of ordinances for taxi cabs, or getting rid of them.
The owners of these things then to be in compliance. So it really falls on that individual or that company to get the job done as quickly as possible to put themselves in compliance. Does that make sense? So that's gonna add in the time. If they're not doing it, it's revoked, period, until they get compliant. With whatever, whatever the reason for revocation.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I don't even know the details of the.
No, I'm just saying, that's gonna add into the time.
I mean.
Yeah. I would think they'd want to do it quickly.
As imperfect as the taxi cab ordinance is, there's a process.
Sure.
We're just not following the process. That's the only point I'm making here. Not that we shouldn't make changes in the future, get out of regulating the market. But until we do that, or if we do, let's follow the process that's already in code.
So if we vote to repeal it and then follow the process and.
That's another way to show it.
Alright.
Yeah. You can tell we agree on this issue. I'm joking.
We've had a lot of heated conversations.
No, you just had a good, good debate.
Yeah, but I mean, that'd be my suggestion, you know, we can, you know, this isn't gonna happen overnight. If we decide to go down, because we're gonna have to figure out what, what pieces of it do we need to keep and what pieces don't we need? Do we need to continue with the chauffeur license regulations? Do we need to keep inspecting vehicles to make sure that the community has safe vehicles to ride in?
Yeah.
But we can, we can go down this other path and achieve the results, I think, that we want a lot quicker.
Okay. We can say so.
On the other hand, we had three permits on the table with Mr. Cab. In addition to the six permits, that seems like administratively, it's gonna take a bit of time to go through the revocation process.
How long does that take?
But, but new permits put on the table.
He's looking.
Could open up that opportunity possibly for other people. And then it'd be still up to the person that has the other six, or the other company that has the six permits to determine whether they're gonna be able to, to fulfill those or not. I mean, the market won't allow it. I mean, is there a process to go through the revocation thing, is what I'm asking, I guess? When you just like today say, okay, you don't, you don't comply, so we're revoking that permit? Or, or from a legal standpoint, are we required to go through a process regarding that revocation?
That I can speak to. I just, I just had it. Uh, but uh, I mean, generally, you, it's gonna be notice. And I just had it, and now I lost it. But I think that denial or revocation, I mean, it's in the code. And um, there's standards uh, laid out to revoke. And then um, the city clerk may revoke if those, if those standards are met with written notice served on the person, and with a date when the revocation becomes effective, summary of the reasons, and then a description of the appeal rights. So um, that's relatively straightforward. We, there'd be some latitude to decide if it's a minor sort of thing, you might say, hey, it's gonna expire in three weeks. You just haven't filled out the sheet of paper that you're supposed to fill out. Now's the time to do it. Or if somebody's been told for six months in advance, and I usually try to be, what I would advise is a degree of advanced notice just for fairness, it's always preferable. But then it, it's a date certain, and it just occurs, subject to an appeal, appeal process. So uh, could be relatively, I mean, we could.
Take a day or two.
Yeah, it could take a day or two. We could, I could sit down with uh, with Dan tomorrow and make substantial headway. So it's a relatively, revocation of something like this is a relatively nimble process. And it's the sort of thing that I'm working on at a given day of the week. It's not a, it's not terribly complicated.
Just because this is a work session. Has anyone considered the possibility that maybe there's only three cabs on the road, because that's what the market will bear? And I know I'm gonna get pushback on that. This whole idea about making sure that there's economic room or multiple, has anybody ever thought that maybe there's only three that can financially be successful at any given time? The market has changed a lot from the days we talked about, when there was ten or twelve, you know, cabs on the road. The market is a hundred percent different. There's god knows how many buses and charter services and courtesy vans and. Twenty years ago, there was.
One or two cabs, probably.
What's that?
Because there was only one or two cabs of those.
Very well could be, for sure, yeah. I mean, yeah, the chicken or the egg kind of thing. Yeah, no, I, I'm sure that, you know, a lot of the entities, you know, did bring in their own transportation because there was, there was a void to fill, for sure.
Or can we have some other sort of regulation? I mean, if you're vouching for only three cab licenses, can we vouch to say that it doesn't all have to be within one company? Because we're in a situation kind of like we are right now, where if we revoke them, we have no cab company? And we're relying on courtesy vans and buses and charters and all of these different things that aren't easily accessible to always the public? I mean, cabs are one of the only things that run early in the morning and late at night. Like, these courtesy vans don't run late. The transportation, I think you're talking with no mesquimoo. They only run until like five or six, maybe. But any time out of office hours, how are people getting around? It's the one cab company we have. And again, if we're in a situation where it's not compliant, why would we risk having none?
That way, are you doing all six, or just the three that he's not using?
Three, sure.
So just the three. He still doesn't have three cabs on the road.
Yeah.
For now.
Feels like all we've been doing up until maybe now is kicking the can down the road continually. And it just feels like a perpetual thing that's never gonna stop unless we take a stand and do something about it.
And I mean, looking historically too, even if we take the three away, what are, what are we gonna do with the other three if he can?
Well, if they, if three were revoked, then I assume it would, I'm just gonna guess, the council might be supportive of issuing.
We have nine that we can.
Of issuing three more, those, those two that were revoked, I mean.
And have weeks and weeks where we don't have cabs?
I mean, those, I would assume that the council would be supportive of reissuing through whatever, I think it's like a drawing or something. Reissuing, yeah, lottery, those three permits. And anybody can.
Well, we already have five permits available. Why wait to revoke?
We don't have to. I do not see anything in code that, that has a stipulation that says that the notice has to be within any set timeframe. However, a stand, I mean, we certainly want to give sufficient notice to the community so that any interested parties would be able to be present. And so a week would probably be the, if not more, a week's notice. I don't know.
To put the available licenses.
If we were to present a, a drawing of lots. What kind of notice would you recommend?
Oh, yeah. A couple of weeks or something like that, yeah. I mean, just whatever would be reasonably fair to the people who want to compete.
An ordinance revision would take two council meetings. Because you have to do two readings. And so at that, arguably, depending on when you did it, could be two to three weeks. About the same.
Or you can push notice to make sure we don't have cabs not running.
What was that, Mark?
You have to give it our interested parties enough time in order to get commercial insurance, get their background checked, get their vehicle inspected. Those are all things that we have currently have in ordinance, or have that provision that they'd have a certain amount of time to do that. And when they present in their, in a lottery.
I don't believe that they have to have all those things set up before they have the license in hand.
I think there's a timeframe after they get the permit in a lottery process that they have to comply. But it's not like right away, where you don't have to have it.
You have at least some set time here.
After you get it.
You have two. Can't operate, but.
Right, they can't operate until they're in compliance, but we don't give them an indefinite amount of time.
Sounds like there's a process in place. We just need to follow it.
Well, if, uh, we're gonna run into the same problem we're currently running into, where we have potentially cabs that are on, that are not following regulations. And we have unregulated cabs that are providing services that are not. and we have unregulated cabs that are providing services that are non-licensed and no insurance, no commercial insurance. So, I'd say for the safety of the public, we better make sure we have our ducks in a row for, if we issue new permits that they're to, once they're gonna be able to adhere to those regulations, if we're gonna enforce them and be able to comply before we give up the permit.
You're right, I mean, you know, Sam, the thing that you heard me say earlier that concerns me by our, like you said, not enforcing, not carrying out everything we're supposed to, you know, I don't like to say this loud, but I find myself in a position whereby if I didn't and someone, like you said, someone gets hurt or some, you know, and we didn't check the boxes, all of a sudden, we're over here going, uh-oh, we're a pocket for a lawsuit. And that scares me, you know, how do we, so how involved are we? How deep do we want to go? And I'm generalizing, um, you know, like the enforcement. Good point, you go in and say, well, I got to shut the whole operation down because they didn't do this, 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 this. And you're right, then all of a sudden, when I'm at Hanson's or AC's and I see people standing there, they're going, you know, well, this is and no criticism to anyone, but they're always there going, and so the day it was raining and this lady, you know, she was like, I walked up and I said, you know, can I help you do it? She said, I've been waiting forty-five minutes, she was soaked. And I know I can't, that's up to the cab service to get there in a timely manner. But that also says, whoa, either we have people or services that are not sufficient and someone else need to come in or open it up so you can have better services. Competition, rates, you, you respond faster, you know, it's like Lyft and Uber. You know, does Uber come faster or does Lyft take a lot, whoever.
Is there any Lyft or Uber operating?
I think, you know, people are talking about it.
Because I mean, city ordinance doesn't cover that, they can, anybody could do it.
About that, yeah.
So is there anybody operating as a Lyft or an Uber?
I don't think so, some, there's a couple that are talking about it.
I heard internet was the issue, is that?
It's a cashless business.
Yeah.
And so they would have to have constant and.
Credit cards, you need credit cards to.
The people that have tried doing Lyft and Uber here, they have found out that, you know, the way that the cabs are doing it where they're just piling people in, that's how you're making your money. If you're doing a Lyft or an Uber, you only do one person taking them from A to B.
They have outline businesses.
But you do have share rides, you have, so there's, you know.
That's why all the cabs are vans.
But if that's the only other way to have this business, I mean, I think that's gonna be the route that people are going to start to pick up on, right? And then even with that, we can't pick up sales tax from those companies.
Oh, we can.
We can? I thought we had talked about it, that we couldn't, that that was a state.
By Lyft or by Uber.
And they submit, that's how.
Okay.
Through the remote, probably.
Like remote sales tax, very similar. Yeah.
And it only takes about half an hour to forty minutes to get most everything going for the.
You did that, didn't you?
Uber application.
You went through just to see what it was like, right?
Yeah, I had everything signed up, I just had to wait for my background check and then, and then get insurance to took pictures of my vehicle and everything went through.
It can easily be done, I mean.
They come up in a film shop.
Well, in between the job, I did it, I did it, uh, just like you said, I did DoorDash and Uber, just to see. And I lived near the airport, man, I was picking up some nice pocket change, you know, but it was easy, it was easy. But it was enough to, there was only certain demands. So what you would find is they would place themselves like airport, but the people living way down in Savannah, they didn't wanna go to the airport because those were long rides and they didn't make as much money unless it was late at night and you got the triple rate, that's what I'd do, I didn't have to get off.
In Anchorage, it seems like both cabs and these other ride services, Lyft, Uber, and there's the other one, Toro or something like that. Are there a different one?
No, that's a rental.
Oh, yeah, it's a rental. They seem to be able to coexist.
Yes.
You know, there's municipality of Anchorage, they still, they still enforce, they still have taxi cab ordinances on the books. And every time I go to the airport, there's a long line of taxi cabs.
Also more than one cab.
Okay, Mark, go ahead.
Company there.
I was gonna say that, that happens in Anchorage because the market exists there.
It's bigger, sure.
Uh, I think it's difficult in Nome to have that market where you have one person, one shared Uber, right? I think that's what they're finding that, and then in addition to maybe the internet issues, but.
So you're saying that there might not be the market demand for a Lyft or Uber?
May not be, right.
But there's market demand for more, but there's market demand for more cab permits?
I think the part of the difficulty is the structure of the.
Throwing that out there.
The structure of Uber and Lyft, you know, if, if the, if the structure is by mile or by distance.
Yeah. I'm not against changing the ordinances at all, that's not, but I think we should try to use the process we have right now until we have something different. That's been the only point I've been making all night, and we're not using the process we have in place.
Where, I mean, I'm asking Mr. Mayor, looking at, I mean, where would, obviously, I'm not polling Mr. Attorney, I'm not doing that, but where do you see us going? I mean, obviously, if the, the flavor is, use what we have, look at tweaking it if necessary, based on what you guys want. But also, um, you know, the enforcement piece, you know, what is that gonna take? Can you do it, you know, and if we can, but then I've sat back and, you know, Maggie said, what if we, you know, have to revoke and all of them are gone?
That's what we're talking about.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Isn't that though, isn't that the process you want to follow, is getting rid of the existing and then?
No.
Some of them, yes.
Revoking non-compliance?
Yes, that's exactly what you were saying.
Yeah, no, yeah, but there's like three cabs in compliance or three.
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically, yes.
We think possibly not.
Permits and three of them are in compliance, you don't revoke all six permits.
If they're not following all of the.
At once, we might have to do this again because we've done it once.
Know what the status is of non-compliance and I don't even wanna get into details.
No, 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 you don't.
But I'm just saying, I mean, there is a process and I know people don't like to hear that because we, the people are frustrated and I acknowledge that, for sure. But to be perfectly candid, I think the lack of city enforcement is a big part of the problem. Okay. It's not fun, I get it, it's awful, you know, but those ordinances are there for a reason and enforcement mechanisms are there, we just haven't followed them yet.
Yeah, and part of that is because we keep talking and keep going and keep saying, okay, we need to follow them and then we do not. It keeps coming up, we just keep giving more and more chances and it doesn't happen. And we should've been doing something a lot sooner. This was brought up when I first brought up, and it's come up several times in that time.
Alright, I think we talked about it last spring.
That was the second time we brought it up.
You talked about it last winter before I got here and I appreciate it.
Last, last winter and last spring. And, and again, there is a history of non-enforcement by the city.
So we just need to start enforcing things.
We have been, we have been, or at least, you know, trying to. And now, if we have gotten to the point with non-compliance, then there are remedies, the nuclear option or whatever, they're there. That's all.
So let's test these last steps. Go ahead and if it's revocation, if it's whatever it is.
It's an administrative decision.
Yeah.
It's not a council decision, my understanding is the council has to approve either new permits being issued beyond the six that are already out there or issuing any potential permits that may be revoked, right?
Yes, and they're, but just letting you know, they're not new, they're permits that were supposed to be reissued a while ago.
They were issued in, yeah, they have, right, they were issued and never, when they were turned back in, they were not reissued.
Yes, they were talked about being new when they're not.
I just, I hit on something earlier, I'll just bring it up now, there's under three ten oh nine oh E. Uh, I think this answers the question, maybe. It says, upon lapse or revocation of a taxi cab license, the council shall determine whether the number of authorized licenses shall be reduced. If the number is not reduced, the lapsed license shall be determined by lot in a public drawing conducted with previous subsections. So, I think that's responsive to it, it would have to be a determination to take that off them, take those permits off them.
Where we got hung up last time. Okay.
Can I ask one last question now, show for a little bit? So, if.
Ask Sam.
Go ahead.
If we issue a letter to the owner of this company again, how much time should we give him to get into compliance again? And are we going to ask him to get in compliance with both of his companies or just the cab company? Cause that's what we're talking about?
We're just talking about the cab.
Okay, and.
It's an administrative decision.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. That's all I was asking, thank you.
Sure.
Cause it's not that we're not following up, it's. We're doing it every six months, every year with this company, so.
Okay.
So, yeah. Can I chime in real fast? Um, I walked into a very in-depth conversation, I don't know that I can really contribute, there's a lot going on here. I will just say, um, the number one thing on my list of priorities is taxi service, microtransit, ride share. Um, if we find out that taxi isn't working, many people rely on it like a utility. Um, I think the issue we end up having with saying we can rely on Uber or other things is right, is that point to point. But microtransit really effectively gets that and there's companies out there, because we, I don't think we really have taxi service in Nome. Taxi service is a vehicle, one person point A to point B, microtransit, and there's companies out there that do this. It's effectively a ride share where you would hail, uh, this ride share on an app and it sends it to you. But that would alleviate the issue of, uh, of point to point. The idea I'm trying to envision is, right, we have to find a solution. I really think the next level to anything that we discuss, whether it's a current taxi service providing it or something else, it's utilizing an app, things like that, where payment can go through that or cash, but it's all, all done through a system. I just wonder whether we're thinking, we're trying to alleviate the current issue we're having, but I wonder whether we need to fundamentally just rethink what we want as far as like people use it like a utility. And if the private sector isn't gonna meet that demand, then maybe there can be some public-private partnership where, you know, there's a platform that's paid for and then maybe somebody bids to run that service or something, but.
Federal transit, I've had on-demand, I've had public transit and then on-demand service. The on-demand service, some of that is supplemented by state and federal money so that you are able to keep the cost down. You know, to, and of course, you know, you know, private services say where you're cutting into our business. Well, while we, and then going back to the whole thing of, um, is it economically viable based on the demand or their inability to serve everyone? They went, you know, I've gone three times to the on-demand service. And it was, you had a dispatcher, you called, said, I, you know, need to do, be at this doctor's appointment at such and such. And in some cases, if you did not meet Medicaid, you know, cause Medicaid will pay and it's, I think somewhat like what the hospital's doing, you know, Medicaid, Medicare can pick those up. But on-demand is also a service, in other words, you can pay for it. I could go right now, I'm not Medicare or Medicaid, but I could pay for that service. It was five dollars for the ride, I pay five dollars. Uh, but that's an on-demand, there is, well, there are options out there, as you said, for, you know, do we really want to get into a governmental on-demand? That would be up to, let's see what happens, even in this revocation deal, this is gonna tell us where, this is a big test. You know, but if that's, like you said, if that's what the ordinance says and what we've been so ordered to do, which we have, then test it and see what happens.
If there's a market for it.
Correct. That's, you're one hundred percent. Yeah.
Can we ask questions?
Still a work session.
We'll have a public comment period during the meeting following the work session.
I know, but I gotta head out.
Um, so, I'm, currently, the, all of the permits are held by one company, is that correct? So there's kind of a monopoly, so we don't have two companies attempting to provide the service that can compete with one another. Perhaps we need to, to do something to make sure that there's at least two cab companies active so that there is some competition uh, in the, in the marketplace on a, on a private deal. And in order to accomplish that, we would have to, perhaps, i- if it can't be done by, by the lot process, maybe we need to say we need at least two cab companies in town no matter what. And so if you've got one that already, then you're disqualified from getting the next permit that comes out. Um, and that guarantees that there's at least one other company that has a, a permit to, to operate. And then that kind of, and, and hopefully that would be an answer to allowing the private marketplace to respond to the demands of the riding public a little better than currently where we only have one company that can operate as it, without any competition, obviously, service isn't, generally is good. Go ahead.
But wouldn't we still be regulating the market?
That way we could actually capture data.
There'd be more than one, I mean, there's monopolies here in Nome right now and they exist and why are they there? Typically, it's because they've outlasted everybody else. And that's exactly what's happened to the cab business here, they've outlasted everybody else. Right, wrong or indifferent, that's why.
Yeah.
They're there.
Right. If you're the best, if you're the most, if you're the better price, then that can happen.
Now, the smart thing to do is keep everybody happy if you have a monopoly, right? That's the smart thing to do.
Yeah.
Problem is, when you don't do that.
Everybody ain't happy, particularly that woman I stood there with who was freezing to death.
But again, I don't, I'm, I'm not, I'm gonna say it one more time, there's a remedy in place to address these issues. Is it gonna be perfect long-term? I, I have no idea. The, I can tell you for certainty, somebody's lived here for close to thirty years, the cab business is one hundred percent different than it used to be ten or fifteen years ago. How was it, can you, do you mind expanding on that for me? We were just kinda touching on it a little bit before, ten or fifteen years ago, I don't recall seeing a lot of these courtesy vans. Like, the hospital has, the airlines have. And, and that's been, so I don't know how many there's, ten, fifteen, I don't know. You've got, Bearing Air's got a couple, Norton Sound's got like at least half a dozen, uh, Nomaskamo has, I think it's a scheduled bu- free bus service, right? And it's not just for tribal members, it's for everybody, right?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, what else, and there's some other, um, there's a couple other ones out there, right?
Norton Sound.
Though, the, all of those transportation services are taking people for free cause it's usually part of their.
Their business.
Their business or the service that they provide, that's taking cab ri- you know, riders away from the cab.
The pie's getting cut up.
Market is a lot smaller, so maybe.
My question is, if that's so, then why are people waiting almost an hour for a ride?
And the mere fact that they're there, that there have been so many more options that have been added lets us know that there is a market that is needing more stuff. So, they, other companies and entities are going there to try and fill in for the failing, the failure for.
Fair point, fair point, but is it too late? Have all of these other services permanently shrunk the cab market to a point where it's not feasible to have more than three or four on the road at any given time?
Okay, well.
It's a question, I'm not, you know.
Well, the only way we're gonna do something is if we, if we try to do something. We can, we try to go and re-issue some of the other permits and then see about revocation or whatnot for the other ones.
So you, you don't wanna wait until there's a potential revocation due to non-compliance, you just wanna issue new permits right now?
We're, we're staring. We're, we're staring down the barrel. We only have this.
No, it's a question. So, so you're, so you're recommending we issue like some of those five permits that haven't been reissued for quite a while?
We had talked about issuing before.
And, and, and not even worrying about any potential revocations? That's your recommendation, right?
Well, we do that and then see about, that way we have some, the, we're following along, we're going, we have the, the, we're starting down the path rather than getting stuck with, okay, well, if we revoke this, then we have no one. At least we'll have something going and it'll be a less amount of time before we can have something going for.
All targeted.
Yes.
We just went through the process in at least a couple of weeks.
So we can do both, do both. Revoke three, add three.
Well, we can't really say it's a given that we're going to revoke any because we don't know the circumstances. I don't think that's fair to the current operator to make those speculations in public.
The council has the decision to be able to determine how many are needed that are out there. Now, the one thing about lots is that you can't control who they go to. And so anybody could put in for those three. They get, uh, three hats. You pick a, a name out of a hat and whoever gets that, as long as they can come up with a viable business to actually run it, then yeah, they could be run. We could be talking about one cab company, we could be talking about three.
True.
We don't have control over that. That's just how it's wrote in code.
Yeah.
If you can do it and make a little money, then you do it.
But it could be one license, it could be two, it could be up to five, because that's all that the code supports right now. Something to think about.
Yes. It's something that we probably should do because we're, we get to this and talking about revocation or doing something. We're trying to keep the current cab company in compliance and things have not been happening. Things, some things have, a lot of things haven't.
Yeah. Well, kind of what I'm hearing, Mr. Mayor, is what I'll do is I'll go ahead and sit down with Brad and with Dan and looks, look at what those next steps are. And if it requires revocation, it requires revocation. Or are there things that we can do to speed up the, because obviously you want the service out there, good service. And it's, it's, it is a major issue now. Walked over and there were four or five of it. They'd been there for an hour, standing out there and the wind blowing and it raining. You know, that says, poor service, can I help poor service? No. But the demand of those folks, if, if they could find someone that was timely, whoop, they'd shift over. So, I know, and there's nothing I can, you know, on that, but there has to be a demand here. And you're right, there are all these other services. Has it cut into the pie? Absolutely. But what else is out there? Well, if they were that busy and can't get over and pick somebody up, it must be pretty darn good. But we don't know that. Is it just poor service?
And we don't know how well all of these other services are doing either. Maybe they have demands that they can't meet because, again, this is a market that could be viable potentially. And thinking about it, Nome is only getting bigger.
Yes.
And we have, thinking about, we, we've talked about electronic payments. There are people in communities that are surrounding us that don't have access to some of these economies in the villages that are smaller. They are still cash economies solely. There are people who still have only access to cash. That is also something to think about because they do come here on occasion and they do need a ride.
Yeah. True.
So we're not just serving Nome too. We're serving people who come here, who are passing through.
True.
Tourists.
Yeah, it's a great point.
I, I think Maggie makes a really good point, but I would kind of say that the big difference between the entities that are providing this courtesy shuttle service like the hospital, like the airlines, like whoever, they don't have to make a profit on that service. The cabs, they absolutely have to make a profit, not just the owner of the vans and the, and the, and the vehicles, but the drivers themselves. And if there's not enough demand so they can meet their profitability goal or whatever their daily number is, if they need, they're not going to do it. Doesn't matter. The airlines, the hospitals, they're still going to run their vans because, you know, they can. Because it's not, they're not relying on that money to, for their business to be successful. Cabs, 100% different. They live and die by the amount of fares that they, they do. Both the drivers and the owner of the, of the cab business. So that's, that's a key difference. And I, and that's the whole, I believe that's why the ordinance was structured as it is, that the council has to make that determination or at least consider it, is it economically viable for the number of permits that are out there? So.
How has that been determined?
Also, these other people who are going to put in for a permit need to realize that if they're going to start a business, they better hope there's people out there that want to get in their cab. It's also on them.
Yep. No, you're absolutely right.
How has it been determined in the past?
We've never done it.
It's never been done. It's never been determined. This is probably more, we've talked about it.
About the demand.
Or the situation has never happened where it's a single company. It's all there, we've always had more than one, right?
Yeah.
And so if the only way that we can tell that it's been determined is the amount of permits that were issued in the past and stuff's been issued and then reissued.
Thank you.
That's when we look at it.
So we should probably issue something else and see how it goes. If the company's able to go, then cool. If the service changes and our, and people are taking that service, then we, we have a good idea.
And don't you think too that at some point, if other companies find that these courtesy rides aren't working or they're not worth their time, they can also stop and then that opens even more revenue? Because there was a point in time where they didn't need to provide a courtesy ride. It's gotten to that point where they've needed to.
I would agree. I thought the courtesy vans are more of a response to the market failing to meet, you know, there's a lot of organizations that just have cab vouchers and that was how it was done for many years. And then it became such an unwell, and became such an unreliable service in some instances that then they looked for internal methods to resolve their problems.
And these courtesy.
Starting their own service.
Yeah, these courtesy vans, do they, do they charge a fee for their services to their clients?
I would say typically they don't. Not that I'm aware of. The ones that I've, if they consider cost of doing business and they do it out of convenience.
So people are going to take the free service.
They're like, we don't, our patients wait an hour anymore. We got to get them home.
I'm saying, I believe that market has been permanently changed or reduced for cabs. So maybe there were 10 or 11 that used to be able to, you know, to generate enough profit to stay in business.
I think, I think.
I believe that has changed in very dramatic fashion. And whether or not that's part of the decision of the current operator to only run three cabs at a time.
Yeah.
Might be.
Good. Yeah.
If it's not an essential part of their company, they can take it away at any time, right? Like, again, I think it's a need. Like if these courtesy rides, it's not an essential function of their, um, business, they can take it away at any time. And in that point, it's not guaranteed. A lot of these courtesy rides are going from point A to point B. They're not taking people home or to work or picking up employees. It's strictly point A to point B, right? It's not a, it's not taking around town, they're not, no. There are other places that people have or would like to be.
Well, again, what I'll do is, and I appreciate, you've helped me a lot to understand where we are and kind of what your thinking is. But I'll sit down with Brad and Dan, let's talk about those next levels of compliance and enforcement and go from there. And then in the meantime, kind of see where we go and come back to. But I, today, other than just making it fun for the new Adam and the new mayor, Adam and Adam, right?
The new Adam. The new Adam and the new mayor.
Yeah.
This could be problematic.
Isn't calling you Adam.
Yeah.
Change your name.
So we, we'll, we'll do that and then get back with you. But I didn't do it just to have fun, but I appreciate the education piece. But we'll get together and look at that on what we should be at that next level. Just know I hear, you know.
Good discussion.
Yeah. I appreciate it very much. Thank you.
Hey.
You have a very valid point.
Yeah.
You've made the same point over and over and over again to keep it going. Nothing's changing.
I will be curious on revocations, what it does. And I think that's what Maggie said. If it's as bad as I think, we could close it down. Not, not that we're attempting to, but you see what I'm saying? If the compliance is bad enough, the violations, then you could. But what does that mean? I don't know. There's some unknowns. But, okay.
Welcome aboard.
Can't pretend to make excuses. My apologies for being late today.
The very first.
We'll call the Nome Common Council regular meeting for Monday, October 27th, 2025. We order at 7:03 PM. Dirk can call the roll, please.
Councilmember Henderson.
Here.
Councilmember Johnson.
Here.
Councilmember Marson.
Here.
Councilmember Green.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Lust.
Here.
Assistant Representative Stasenko.
Absent. She knows about it, but she had prior engagement, so she might still show it.
All right. Looks like we have quorum. Next item on the agenda is approval of agenda. Okay, motion by Councilman Green, seconded by Councilman Henderson.
Sure.
Any discussion? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Councilmember Marson.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Lust.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next item is approval of the minutes.
There are no minutes.
There are no minutes. Okay. I guess those were planning commission minutes in the back. My error. Communications, there are none. Citizens, so we'll move on to citizens' comments. Are there any citizens that wish to comment at this time? Come to the podium, state your name for the record.
You calling, you're talking about Burnham?
Nope, nope, nope. Just general public comments.
Gotcha.
Will it be an opportunity to comment during that section or would now?
There will be a public hearing on Mr. Burnham's appeal coming up on the agenda, yes.
Thanks, sir.
Hearing no citizens' comments, we'll move on then to unfinished business, which is blank, new business. Item A, resolution 25-10-02, a resolution to name the parties qualified to sign depository pledge agreements, orders for payment warrants under checks against the City of Nome accounts.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilman Henderson, seconded by Councilperson Miller. Is there any discussion on the resolution? Hearing none. Call roll.
Councilmember Marson.
Yes.
Councilmember Green.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Lust.
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson.
Yes.
Motion passed.
Motion carries. All right. Next item on the agenda is a recommendation.
that makes it, it gets harder and harder rapidly. And so that's a decision that he could make. It's a, it is not a conflict of interest necessarily under the code, which deals exclusively with financial conflicts of interest. But it's a unique situation where people were on the planning commission that thought out of fairness should be raised. But I feel like it's been taken care of, and his attorney feels the same way. But you're right in your shorthand version that it'd be less people to vote for him, but that he needs four, and that number would be getting scarce rapidly if people recuse themselves. So. Okay, so we will participate? Okay.
Then we'll.
Mr. Mayor, I can go ahead and kind of set the stage briefly, if you'd like.
Okay.
Yeah. The, Mr. Burnham's attorney and I briefly discussed and agreed on just sort of a run of show or an order of operations, because there isn't one in the code. And that is as follows. Is one, a brief staff presentation outlining the appeal process, which is what, as long as Ms. Stone doesn't have any objection, I feel like that's what I'm trying to do right now. And I'll keep that pretty brief. And then number two, presentation by attorney for the appellant. That would be Mr. Burnham's attorneys. Members may ask questions at the conclusion of her presentation. Staff's presentation, that'll be a combination of Ms. Reinders and maybe some comments from me on the legal components. Number four, public testimony. We'll point out that Gnome's code is, maybe unique, I think, but in that it allows public testimony at an appeal like this. So that is something to contemplate permitting. And upon conclusion of any public testimony, the staff, followed by the attorney, shall have the right of rebuttal. So a brief rebuttal by both parties, I think. And we did not agree on specific timeframes. I generally, and I think I mentioned in the memo that I wrote that I find 20 minutes to be generally pretty ample for a party to present their side of things. So if you want, a lot of those things are just at the chair's discretion. If you feel like somebody's hit 20 minutes, but they're still providing you really useful information, if you have the ability to expand that. But some latitude from, from your chair there. With, with that, you know, I did provide, the code on appeals was, I shouldn't say I, it was part of the packet initially to the planning commission. And that packet is in the current packet. So you have a copy of the code. I won't try to recite what the standards are on appeals just yet. That may work its way into argument later or the questions. But I would just, and I can't cite the page number of it, but it's just worth, worth having on hand. The last thing I just wanted to make a quick record of before I turn it over to Ms. Stone, is the title in the council, or in the agenda, I believe, is a public hearing on the denial of a conditional use permit. And just sort of for the record, I think it's clear once you start reading, but the title is a little misleading. There was not a conditional use permit application. It's an enforcement letter that was issued in February. Under the code, an enforcement letter allows an appeal right to challenge the legal or factual basis of the enforcement action. So that's what the appeal actually is. I, I think that's essentially just an error in the title. That's not going to impact anything, but I did just want to clarify that for anybody who's following along and basing their understanding on the title there, so. I think with that, we'll check box number one, which was brief presentation of the appeal process, and move right into Ms. Stone's presentation, if she's so inclined.
Thank you, Mr. Severn. Mr. Mayor and councilmembers, my name is Stacy Stone. I'm with the law firm of Holmes Woodland Barcot, PC, and I represent Canisac LLC and Mr. Joe Burnham. And before I get started, because I am on Zoom, and do apologize that I could not be there with you this evening. If for some reason I'm speaking too fast or the connection breaks, please interrupt me and let me know that you cannot hear me. The City of Gnome's enforcement action against Mr. Joe Burnham and Canisac reflects a misapplication of the zoning code and a failure to recognize both the actual use of the property and the practical realities of operating in Gnome. The planning commission's conclusion that the property is used solely for unroofed outdoor storage under 18600206T is not only factually incorrect, it is legally unsupported and inconsistent with how similar properties are treated across the community. First, the property contains five 40-foot Conex containers and seven 20-foot Conex containers, totaling 3,220 square feet of enclosed interior storage. Indeed, these can be visualized by the photographs that were submitted to you by the city attorney. These are not incidental structures. They are the backbone of the property's function and have been utilized, as advised to those in the city office, as a proposal to what a more permanent structure would look like if approved to be erected. Conex containers are widely recognized in Gnome and across Rollaska as secure, weather-resistant storage buildings. Under NCO 1820010, a warehouse is defined as a building used primarily for the storage and distribution of goods, products, materials, supplies, and equipment. These containers indeed meet that definition. To suggest otherwise ignores both the code's plain language and the lived experience of Gnome residents. City's reliance on NCO 186003OK in the enforcement letter is misplaced and legally irrelevant in this context. That provision permits private storage, including junk or small warehouse associated with residential use for home occupations as a conditional use in the commercial district. However, the use issue here is not in any fashion residential, nor is it incidental to a home occupation. It is clearly commercial in nature. The Conex containers on the property are used for secure enclosed storage of equipment and materials related to a commercial enterprise, not for personal or rental residential purposes. As such, NCO 186003OK does not apply, and its invocation only further underscores the city's mischaracterization of the property's actual use. The applicable provision is NCO 1860020Y, which expressly permits warehousing and storage as a primary use in the commercial district, precisely the use being carried out on the property. Second, the zoning code explicitly permits warehousing and storage as a primary use in the commercial district under NCO 1860020Y. This city's attempt to distinguish between indoor and outdoor storage by requiring a roof structure, a term that is not defined anywhere in the code, is arbitrary and inconsistent with enforcement practices. In fact, the city itself charges for container storage at the port, and there are other lots within the same zoning district that are used exclusively for container storage. This is not a novel or a fringe use. It is a common, accepted, and economically necessary practice in Gnome. Third, Mr. Burnham has made substantial investments in reliance on the property's commercial zoning designation. He has operated in good faith, using the property in a manner consistent with permitted uses. To reinterpret the code now, without clear statutory authority or consistent enforcement, undermines the integrity of the zoning process and sends a troubling message to other property owners and investors. It suggests that even when one complies with the code's plain language, they still may be subject to arbitrary enforcement. Fourth, despite the city's vague and shifting expectations regarding what constitutes a structure, Mr. Burnham has actively worked to obtain a building permit to further formalize the property's use. As recently as August 2025, he was engaged with the city regarding the permitting process. The overall process of any construction was delayed nearly a year due to the need to obtain a determination of no hazard to air navigation from the FAA, a federal requirement outside the control of the property owner and only just recently received. This demonstrates Mr. Burnham's commitment to compliance and his willingness to work within the system, even when the system itself presents significant logistical hurdles. Fifth, the city has attempted to shift its position by suggesting that the property's use would only be appropriate in the industrial district, despite the fact that the zoning ordinance for industrial and commercial districts is practically identical in its treatment of outdoor storage. Both districts permit warehousing and storage as a primary use and restrict outdoor storage to accessory use only. This undermines the city's argument and reveals the enforcement action as arbitrary. If the same use is not permitted as a primary use in either district, then the zoning designation itself is irrelevant to the alleged violation. Moreover, the city's own practices, such as container storage at the port, occur within the industrial district, further demonstrating that Conex-based storage is recognized and accepted use in both zones. Sixth, the city's enforcement approach fails to account for Gnome's unique logistical and environmental challenges. In a community where infrastructure is limited, weather is extreme, and shipping is seasonal, outdoor and container-based storage is not a luxury, it's a necessity. The Gnome Comprehensive Plan emphasizes economic viability and flexibility in land use. Penalizing a property owner for using Conex containers as storage when the city itself does it the same contradicts the planned goals and the community's practical needs. The city's enforcement action also raises serious concerns regarding selective enforcement. While the city now appears to indicate that the action was prompted by a series of community complaints, nothing in the February 2026-25 letter or in the materials presented this evening outside of a vague assertion before the Planning and Zoning Commission actually documents or substantiates that a complaint was received. This absence of evidence is troubling, particularly given the longstanding and open nature of the property's use, which dates back to when Al Beazey owned the parcel. In fact, Mr. Beazey submitted his Army Corps permit to the city, and James Story responded on behalf of the city on July 12, 2006, that Mr. Beazey's project, the plan to build a storage yard for storage containers, was approved. The city has long been on notice, since at least the summer of 2006, that this lot was being used to store storage containers or Conexes. The use has been continuous and visible without prior objection or enforcement. Given the course of interactions between Mr. Burnham and the prior acting city manager over time, it appears that Mr. Burnham may have been improperly singled out, raising the specter of animus rather than neutral application of the zoning code. Such selective enforcement undermines public confidence in the fairness and integrity of the city's land use administration and further supports reversal of the planning commission's decision. As Mr. Severn referenced, the appeal criteria are identified under NCO 18160050. In deciding this tonight, this body must consider several factors. First, the technical meaning of the provision being appealed. The term warehouse is clearly defined in NCO 1820010 as a building used primarily for storage. Conex containers meet this definition. The code does not define roof structure, nor does it exclude containers from qualifying as buildings. The city's interpretation adds a requirement not found in the ordinance, creating ambiguity where none exists. Second, the evidence of past interpretation or application. The city itself uses Conex containers for storage at the port and charges fees for such use. Other properties within the same zoning district are used exclusively for container storage, and no property owner has submitted a nonconforming use permit application following the significant zoning change. And I'll reiterate that during the Planning and Zoning Commission, it was found for the first time by that body that no applications for nonconforming use were submitted to the city. This demonstrates a longstanding accepted interpretation. Conex-based storage is permissible and consistent with zoning practices. Moreover, Mr. Burnham's use of the property has been open and continuous since at least 2006, with no prior enforcement actions or objections further reinforcing the legitimacy of the current use. The council must next consider the impact on city development goals and objections. Reversing the planning commission's decision supports the goals of the Gnome Comprehensive Plan, which emphasizes economic viability, flexibility in land use and support for local businesses. despite the fact that the zoning ordinance for industrial and commercial districts is practically identical in its treatment of outdoor storage. Both districts permit warehousing and storage as a primary use and restrict outdoor storage to accessory use only. This undermines the city's argument and reveals the enforcement action as arbitrary. If the same use is not permitted as a primary use in either district, then the zoning designation itself is irrelevant to the alleged violation. Moreover, the city's own practices, such as container storage at the port, occur within the industrial district, further demonstrating that Conex-based storage is recognized and accepted use in both zones. Sixth, the city's enforcement approach fails to account for Gnome's unique logistical and environmental challenges. In a community where infrastructure is limited, weather is extreme, and shipping is seasonal, outdoor and container-based storage is not a luxury, it's a necessity. The Gnome Comprehensive Plan emphasizes economic viability and flexibility in land use. Penalizing a property owner for using Conex containers as storage when the city itself does it the same contradicts the planned goals and the community's practical needs. The city's enforcement action also raises serious concerns regarding selective enforcement. While the city now appears to indicate that the action was prompted by a series of community complaints, nothing in the February 2026-25 letter or in the materials presented this evening outside of a vague assertion before the Planning and Zoning Commission actually documents or substantiates that a complaint was received. This absence of evidence is troubling, particularly given the longstanding and open nature of the property's use, which dates back to when Al Beazey owned the parcel. In fact, Mr. Beazey submitted his Army Corps permit to the city, and James Story responded on behalf of the city on July 12, 2006, that Mr. Beazey's project, the plan to build a storage yard for storage containers, was approved. The city has long been on notice, since at least the summer of 2006, that this lot was being used to store storage containers or Conexes. The use has been continuous and visible without prior objection or enforcement. Given the course of interactions between Mr. Burnham and the prior acting city manager over time, it appears that Mr. Burnham may have been improperly singled out, raising the specter of animus rather than neutral application of the zoning code. Such selective enforcement undermines public confidence in the fairness and integrity of the city's land use administration and further supports reversal of the Planning Commission's decision. As Mr. Severn referenced, the appeal criteria are identified under NCO 18160050. In deciding this tonight, this body must consider several factors. First, the technical meaning of the provision being appealed. Term warehouse is clearly defined in NCO 1820010 as a building used primarily for storage. Conex containers meet this definition. Code does not define roof structure, nor does it exclude containers from qualifying as buildings. The city's interpretation adds a requirement not found in the ordinance, creating ambiguity where none exists. Second, the evidence of past interpretation or application. The city itself uses Conex containers for storage at the port and charges fees for such use. Other properties within the same zoning district are used exclusively for container storage, and no property owner has submitted a nonconforming use permit application following the significant zoning change. And I'll reiterate that during the Planning and Zoning Commission, it was found for the first time by that body that no applications for nonconforming use were submitted to the city. This demonstrates a longstanding accepted interpretation. Conex-based storage is permissible and consistent with zoning practices. Moreover, Mr. Burnham's use of the property has been open and continuous since at least 2006, with no prior enforcement actions or objections further reinforcing the legitimacy of the current use. The council must next consider the impact on city development goals and objections. Reversing the Planning Commission's decision supports the goals of the Gnome Comprehensive Plan, which emphasizes economic viability, flexibility in land use, and support for local businesses. Mr. Burnham operates an offshore mining enterprise, has made significant investments in the community, and is a citizen taxpayer. Penalizing him under the totality of the circumstances, including the city's own use of Conex containers, undermines these objectives. Next, the council must consider the intent of the provision in implementing the Comprehensive Plan. The zoning code and Comprehensive Plan aim to promote practical, sustainable development. The enforcement action contradicts this intent by imposing impractical restrictions that ignore Gnome's logistical realities, logistical realities facing this specific property given its proximity to the runway, seasonal shipping issues, limited infrastructure, and harsh weather conditions. Next, the council must consider incorrect or incomplete facts. The Planning Commission's decision was based on the incorrect assertion that the property is used solely for unroofed outdoor storage when in fact the property contains over thirty-two hundred square feet of enclosed secure storage within Conex containers, which are widely recognized in Gnome as functional, weather-resistant storage buildings. Finally, this body must consider whether the incorrect conclusion was come to regarding the code or law. The conclusion that Conex containers do not qualify as buildings or warehouses is legally unsupported. The code does not exclude containers, and the city's own practices confirm their acceptance as a valid storage structure. Furthermore, the absence of any nonconforming use applications from other property owners following the zoning change, combined with Mr. Burnham's longstanding visible use of the property, highlights the arbitrary nature of the current enforcement and supports reversal of the Planning Commission's decision. It is particularly telling and deeply concerning that during the Planning Commission's deliberations, staff confirms not a single nonconforming use permit had ever been submitted. This admission underscores a fundamental flaw in the city's zoning enforcement process and raises serious due process concerns. The city cannot reasonably expect property owners to comply with a registration requirement that was never meaningfully publicized nor consistently enforced. The absence of any application suggests that the property was either inaccessible or inadequately communicated to the public. In this context, penalizing Mr. Burnham for failing to submit a nonconforming use application when no other property owners appear to have done so reflects a breakdown in procedural fairness. Due process requires that property owners be given clear and a reasonable opportunity to comply. The city's failure to implement its own registration system in a practical and equitable manner further supports reversal of the Planning Commission's decision. Your council has aptly pointed out to you that fundamental due process concerns raised by this enforcement action are not proper to be heard tonight. Due process requires at minimum fair notice and a meaningful opportunity to be heard. In this case, the city's shifting interpretation of the zoning code, lack of clear guidance, and inconsistent enforcement practices have deprived the property owner of both. It is our sincere hope that this body will reverse course based on the facts and legal framework set forth here tonight and avoid a protracted legal battle in the courts that will undoubtedly result in significant and unnecessary expense for all parties. Such a dispute would run counter to the goals of the zoning ordinance and the Gnome Comprehensive Plan, which again emphasize economic viability, fairness, and practical land use tailored to the realities of the Gnome community. In conclusion, this is not just a zoning issue, it is a fairness issue. Mr. Burnham's use of the property is consistent with the code, consistent with community norms, and consistent with the city's own practices. The Planning Commission's decision should be reversed. The council has the opportunity tonight to affirm a fair, consistent, and practical interpretation of the zoning code, one that supports local businesses, respects property rights, and reflects the realities of life in Gnome. Thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions of Ms. Stone? At this time, if not, the next step we had agreed on was to have Ms. Reinders present the city's position.
Hi, Ms. Stone. Mr. Burnham apparently has a sales tax license of some type. There is some business. Do you know what that business is?
I will let Mr. Burnham speak to that if I'm not able to answer your question fully, but my understanding is that he does engage in sale of certain of the equipment that is stored on the property, the equipment and vehicles. He is able to bring items to Gnome and gather items in Gnome as a result, kind of secondary to his other business that he's engaged in. That business is occurring at this property, and that's where he's registered to do with the city, and he does pay sales tax with regard to those sales that occur related to this property.
So it's an equipment sales business? Is that what this?
Sales and leasing, yes.
Can I confirm that with the city administration that that's what that sales tax license is for?
That's correct.
Has Mr. Burnham, since the decision of both city administration and the planning commission, has Mr. Burnham applied for a conditional use agreement with the goal of obtaining a compliance agreement with the city? Has that happened? And if it hasn't happened, why not?
It's our position that that's not proper, that there's actually indoor or storage occurring on the property, which is a permitted use in the commercial district, given the thirty-two hundred square feet of Conex space, and that the outside storage is accessory to that use, meaning that those items don't fit into the Conex, and they are there, and that it is proper under the code provision. So it is our position that there is not a conditional land use permit that is necessary to be applied for.
May I speak?
And I will, I just have one more thing to add. I will note, as I pointed out in my argument, the conditional land use permit that was suggested within the original enforcement letter was secondary to residential or home occupation, and neither of those items apply under these factual circumstances.
May I speak additionally in answer to that question?
Sure.
When this originally came up, I was told that if I applied for a conditional use permit, it would not be approved. So I didn't bother to apply for one, even though I didn't think I needed one. But I was told by the city clerk, which was the acting manager, city manager at the time, that it wouldn't likely be approved if I did apply for a conditional use permit for the area.
So in the zoning code in the commercial district, you made reference in your written comments about, I guess you call it subsection Y, under permitted use as warehousing and storage. That doesn't specify either indoor or outdoor, it just says warehousing and storage. And I know both sides have noted that. Are you saying that, and in your comments, I think you said the terms are not defined as exclusively indoor, nor does the ordinance contain any language prohibiting outdoor storage as part of those uses? So is it your position that that can be either indoor or outdoor because of the kind of the ambiguity, if you will, of that section?
I believe that the plain language, when you read this as a layperson with the plain language, that that is what a layperson would read this as, yes. And I do think outdoor storage is specifically defined in the code prior to the commercial exception, but I don't think that the way the code is written, that it is articulate enough to prohibit the use for which Mr. Burnham is using the property.
Okay. Last question. I'm assuming you've made reference to the Conexes as being warehouse space. And I'm assuming you're not intending for Mr. Burnham to move all of his equipment and items on the lot into Conexes or warehouses, because that's essentially what the, you know, the conditional use process would entail. I assume that's not what you're saying by using, you know, the reference that the Conexes are warehousing, and eventually it's all going to be inside.
No, not at all. What I'm saying is there's thirty-two hundred feet of warehousing and storage in those Conexes, and then there is also outside storage as an accessory use, which would be permitted. Because there is both indoor and outdoor storage on the property, then under that zoning code, that is an acceptable use.
Okay. I don't have any more questions. Thanks.
All right. If there's no more questions from Ms. Stone, the next step is to hear Ms. Reinders with the city's position.
Yes. Good evening. I too am on Zoom, so if you can't hear me or if I am talking too fast, please, please do let me know. So you all, as Sam indicated, have quite a bit of material in the packet, and so I'm not going to review that in great detail. There's also a memo that I had drafted when this appeal was originally considered at the Planning Commission, and all of that certainly remains relevant as well. So that will give you an overview of what the Comprehensive Plan says about kind of the purpose and intention behind the commercial district and, you know, and where it wants to stay, storage and that sort of thing, and then also a little bit on the zoning code. So, but I do just want to kind of summarize a little bit here tonight that to review that tonight we are here to consider Mr. Burnham's appeal of the Planning Commission's decision. And that Planning Commission's decision was to decline Mr. Burnham's original appeal of staff's determination that outdoor storage is a primary use of his commercially zoned property, and that such a use is not permitted in that commercial zoning district. So then it kind of becomes two main questions, right? So how does the City of Gnomes code define outdoor storage and accessory use? And then the other question is, and then does the City of Gnomes code allow outdoor storage as that primary use in the commercial district? So the Gnomes code defines outdoor storage as the keeping in an unroofed area any goods, material, merchandise, or vehicles for more than twenty-four hours. So the photos in your packet clearly demonstrate that the property in question is being used in this way, meaning that the property is being used to store vehicles and materials that are unroofed. So Gnomes code allows for outdoor storage, including junk, as an accessory use to any permitted or conditional use in the commercials and the district. And again, that accessory use means a use or a building that is customarily incidental or subordinate to and located on the same lot as that principal building. So no other permitted or conditional uses are really taking place on this property that the outdoor storage is really supporting. So this outdoor storage is not an accessory use and is really being the primary use of the property. So again, the photos in your packet demonstrate that. So that's really all I have for you today. Certainly happy to answer your questions as they, you know, after we're kind of done with this part, but then certainly as we move forward.
Thank you, Erin. A couple of comments that I would like to make on behalf of the city. There's a lot here to consider. We've already done much of it in writing. Hopefully keep my comments relatively brief. I do want to point out that I am acting as an advocate for the city's position as opposed to a neutral advisor. You know, an hour ago, I sat up there, we talked about a potential ordinance. I was wearing a different hat at that point. I try to present information neutrally in my understanding of what's lawful, but I do want to point out I am in a different role. A couple of big points is, one, there's a lot going on here. There's a lot of writing, there's a lot of argument. But one question that I have, or I'd like you to ask yourselves is, we have a lot of talk about nonconforming uses. It's somewhat of a risky argument, I think, to make by Mr. Burnham because there's an argument that, it's an alternate argument. Is one, the current use is completely compliant with the code. Alternatively, it is unlawful, but it is lawful because it's a nonconforming use. I think to cut through a little bit of all the sort of legal alphabet soup that's out there, the council could focus on, I mean, those are, making an alternate argument, I don't want to criticize anybody for doing that, but at some point, the paths are going to have to, we're going to have to pick a path to take, and it's either legal or unlawful but for the pre-existing prior use, which in that case, we have to ask whether the code has been followed for the nonconforming use. And that's pretty well laid out, but there's a registration requirement that was not met. And, you know, there's proof requirements, that's all laid out in the briefing. But, and we can talk about that. Or are we going down the route that it is a valid use at present? I think the good news is that if we're under the, it is an existing use, if that's the track we're taking, the city and Mr. Burnham do agree that we need to look, you know, carefully at the code. Couple of just little pieces I wanted to kind of clear up. I mean, I think it's fairly clear, if all of the material is under a roof, then there's compliance with the zoning code because it's no longer outdoor storage. It would be permitted warehousing and storage. A couple, let's see here. Keep some time for questions and/or rebuttal and not take too much of the floor. But one other thing, a couple of just cleaning up points. This errant exclusion of 186003OK, that's been raised here. There was, in the original enforcement letter, there was a statement that private storage, including junk, requires a conditional use permit, cited to 186003OK and said no conditional use permit has been applied for. Because there's no conditional use permit, the conditional use permit section of the code can just be disregarded. It was a line in an enforcement letter meant to illustrate that there's a variety of options to come into compliance here. It's not, I mean, it wasn't a mistake, but it also is not of any relevance today. So I think that's an area where we're in agreement. I don't think that that's useful to the city or useful to Mr. Burnham. That's just a line that was in the original enforcement letter that's really just not of any help tonight. And yeah, I think with that, I mean, I really want to just kind of try to set this up in a way where we can, to help the council distill the decision down a little bit. And adding more right now, I think I'll reserve for questions because I hope that those pieces are helpful to frame it up a little bit. Council's free to ask questions of me or Ms. Reinders.
Mr. Man, this is Mark.
Go ahead.
It sounds like Ms. Stone, one of Ms. Stone's points was that, and from Mr. Burnham himself, that he has a equipment and supply sales and leasing business. And I guess my question for city planner or the attorney is whether they recognize that as a legal and viable business in Gnome or not?
I can handle that. I mean, I think that could be a legally viable business. I don't think there's a problem with that. The question is that under 1860020H, what is allowed is small-scale manufacturing and is allowed is small-scale manufacturing and storage of goods, which is incidental to goods or wholesale or retail on the premises. So the question is not whether a person has a business, it's whether the storage is incidental to retail or wholesale sale on the premises. I think that to prevail on that argument, I feel like there's a lack of evidence in the record, like how much of the property is committed to storage versus retail or wholesale? What is actually being manufactured, processed, and stored? What is the retail operation? What percentage of sales are occurring on the property? You know, the, the entity has a state business code of shellfish fishing. I don't know how that's related. So it would be viable. How I envision that H being used as an example of incidental to retail or wholesale is something like the, you know, grocery store that has firewood for sale and the firewood is stored there, or I think in the briefing I used an example of, you know, a bike store that keeps some bikes there. I think the question is really, is it incidental or is it predominant? And we don't have any evidence on the frequency of the sales or how robust that retail operation is versus having a business license to do so, but it being predominantly a storage place with an occasional sale. I just feel like the, the evidence is light as far as really trying to make a go of asserting that 1860-02-0H applies. But you're, would it be a valid business? I have no reason to believe that, that that wouldn't be a permitted business in Nome.
Okay, thank you.
Scott?
Do you have any question? Kind of following along Mark's line of questioning, his, and I don't know who can ever answer this question, I guess, has Mr. Burnham ever brought in a piece of equipment to his lot and then sold it, and then either he took it off the lot, delivered it to the customer, or the customer picked it up himself? Has that ever occurred? And I don't know who would be best to answer that.
I think yes.
The answer is yes?
It happens several times, yes.
Okay. In the city's packet, there was a number of satellite pictures, and I think it was designed to show that prior to Mr. Burnham's purchase of the property in 2022, that it was basically a couple of Conexes that were sitting there. And it was the city's position that while those Conexes were there, that he was basically in compliance with the zoning code, or whoever the owner was before, Mr. Burnham. Is that?
That's correct. I mean, if that's the extent of it, then I think that is, you know, got a roof on it. I think the other, the other piece of that is that, again, if we are going down that nonconforming component, is there's a burden of proof also to show. It's not clear to me, and it's, it's just a lack of evidence.
Right.
Those are, but somewhere between '06 and 2010, things changed significantly, and I just don't, if we're going down that route, there's a burden to prove that on the cutoff date in 2008, which I can't remember the exact day, but, you know, that it was being used that way. And I don't, it's not the city's burden to make that, but, so it's designed to illustrate that as well. But also, yes, that historically there were a handful of Conexes, and those were roofed storage.
And so if that was the case, it was just basically several Conexes there, that he was in compliance, or the previous owner was in compliance with the city's zoning code. And I, and that's, and it kind of goes along with, I think, Ms. Stone's arguments that basically, per the code, Conexes qualify as warehouses or indoor storage. And I guess, you know, the question is, it appears to me that Mr. Burnham's making the point, case that my primary use of the property is permitted, which is essentially warehouse storage or Conex storage, and the secondary use is outside storage. So I guess, does the city agree that warehouses or Conexes qualify as covered space or warehouse space under the zoning code?
Yeah, I mean, just look at the code. I really don't disagree. I mean, if you're looking at, outdoor storage means keeping in an unroofed area of any goods, material, merchandise, or vehicles for more than 24 hours. Warehouse means a building used primarily for the storage and distribution of goods, products, materials, supplies, and equipment. It does appear that once you put a roof over it, it gets out of being outdoor storage. Whether that is a great result or not, I don't know, but it cleans it up and puts a roof over it. So I think there's room there to make that argument.
Right. The other question I have is related to the process. Is it, is it true that there's, the city has not received any applications either before or after the October 2018 deadline for nonconforming use? Is that, is that correct?
That was before I was here.
What about afterwards?
Not afterwards. I mean, I've only been here since 2024, so.
Have we received an application for a nonconforming use since you've been here?
No, not since I've been here, in the last two, two years.
So the city has never, at least according to anybody's memory or recollection, has never received an application for nonconforming use to, you know, if they had a preexisting business prior to the implementation of zoning? Correct?
I can't confirm or deny that statement.
Okay. Are we aware of anybody that's ever applied for a nonconforming, anyone in this room? Is anyone aware of any non, an application for nonconforming use of a piece of property, ever?
The only people that would know of that would be in the city clerk's office, and nobody's left over from that time, so.
Yeah.
The only thing that came close was when Mr. Trowbridge attempted to use a facility down here that used to be owned by J.D. Walsh, and there was a lot of discussion about nonconforming use and that particular one. But I don't know if he ever applied for a nonconforming use permit, or, but eventually he did not. He, that's not currently, that's not currently where he worked, so he made other choices.
Just nobody is aware of any?
Outside of that, that's the closest one. I think that's actually mentioned in the packet somewhere.
Right, I think that was the conclusion of the Planning Commission. So.
Okay.
It was in the minutes. Okay, just curious. That's all.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead, Mark.
Yeah, can I respectfully ask for the mayor and the city clerk to speak louder? So we can, I, I can't really hear on Zoom very well. I don't know if it can hear on other media, but if I could respectfully ask for you guys to speak louder, it'd really be helpful to hear the answers.
Okay.
Any other questions? The next step?
Go back to my, briefly, my procedural, yeah, public testimony. And then just to preview, I guess what we had agreed upon was that staff followed, after public testimony, staff followed by Ms. Stone should have the, a right to rebuttal and come, make an argument. So we could allow public testimony, and I'd suggest the chair maybe consider a, you know, a time limit, or it's up to you to control the, the flow.
All right. So we'll now recess into public hearing. If you wish to speak to this issue, come to the podium, state your name for the record. Seven fifty-four.
Mr. Mayor, esteemed council, my honor to be here. My name is Kenneth Kerr. Been a resident of Nome since 2010, came here in 2008. I have hundreds of acres of property around here, invested millions of dollars in Nome, and I've driven up and down the road many a times where Joe Burnham's got his stuff. I mean, I'm just a simple guy, but I don't even like Joe, by the way, but anyway, I think he's a good guy. He just did a really nice, fabulous upgrade on First Street, on a three-story house over there, complex. Beautiful upgrade, he's a good, good guy. I think it'd be to Nome's advantage to let, overturn the commission's decision in on appeal. I'm hoping you guys will take in consideration on all the other places in Nome that kind of look worse than that. Not to, you know, mention my place, no. Anyway, I got a residence outside of Nome, and I have two or three residents in Nome. And Joe's been a good guy around here, he's a really good asset to the community. And I just think you guys ought to overturn that, that, on appeal here, and vote to let him stay. That's it.
Now, how's it going? Derek McClarty, Nome citizen. Just a few things that were Mr. Burnham's behalf. He's a port user, he's a property developer, he's a crane operator, he's a businessman. He looks around and sees a bunch of what we call junk that ends up in the monofil and turns it into something usable and sells it and makes money. And I think that a lot of Nome was built that way. And I think that his property, though, some might call it a junkyard, other might call it a treasure, I think that his yard, you know, is not dissimilar to the surrounding properties. And I think that the zoning is the same on those surrounding properties, and the state of, if you would, disarray is also the same of those surrounding properties. Going back, if I, if I can remember this property, it wasn't just Conexes, there was a flatbed truck, an old forklift, and some other stuff that had sat there historically forever, prior to all of this. And also with, once upon a time, my tenure was on the Planning Commission, and, and with the zoning that was made, things had to change. They just didn't make sense, they weren't right. And there had to be, you know, I mean, the old hospital, we had to change the zoning on it to turn it into a viable business. We had to, you know, take into account, you know, that Nome is unique, and sometimes the zoning needs a little bit of a break, if you will. Nonconforming use, the only thing I could think of was the Perkins Old Arctic Cat shop, when TSR grandfathered that into a commercial shop, even though it's owned in general over there. So that historically has happened, had to go through this whole process and then get approved. And the council was on board and realized that, you know, business is important and that sometimes rules need to be laxed a little bit. That's really all I have to say. I hope you, you know, side on the logical side here.
Thank you, Mr. McClarty. Is there anyone else? Going once, going twice? Mr. Burnham?
Yeah. Excuse me, I'm a little bit gimpy. I'd like to go. Oh, Joe Burnham, sorry. We're having trouble hearing back here, and I'd like to go back to Mark's question, when he asked the clerk and yourself to speak up in your answer to that question that was asked you. Could y'all re-answer that question about whether anybody had applied for nonconforming rights at all, ever? Because I couldn't hear the answers. And I'd appreciate if y'all could respond to that.
I believe Derek just had the correct answer to that, didn't he?
I couldn't hear him either, I'm sorry. And one other thing, aside from this meeting, I've been to a couple of meetings here, and it's always almost impossible to hear. And I would donate the first $5,000 for you guys to get a PA system that operates where the public can hear. If you guys want to take it, I'm willing to give it. So we can hear, and people online or wherever can hear, because it's really hard to hear in here. Thank you. And thank you for your consideration, and y'all's volunteering for these positions. I know it takes up a lot of your time and whatnot. I hope you'll reverse that decision because I think I am in the right, and that's all I got to say. But I'll leave a check with whoever needs it for that PA system, for the general.
So if there's no more public testimony, we will come out of public hearing at 8:02 PM. And go ahead, Mr. Severin.
Sure. First of all, I'd like to, my, my internet connectivity to look at the code wasn't the greatest. I'd like to have Ms. Reinders make sure that I, I'd like to hear her position on the Conex and outdoor storage and warehouse, and make sure that we are on the same page there. Erin, would you please?
Yeah, sure. I think there's a little bit of nuance here that might be worth naming. So outdoor storage, again, as we've heard a few times tonight, is defined as material that's being stored unroofed, right? So that is different than material being stored in a building. So I think there can be an argument made that material being stored within a container is not outdoor storage. However, if you look at the definition of warehouse, that includes the term building. So, you know, and the construction thereof. So that would require a building permit, whereas a container does not. And the containers, you know, that are currently on there are able to be moved around or, and relocated offsite as well. So, and, you know, they don't have a building permit on there. So I think it, just because something, and I'm not saying that this is super clear and neat and ties everything up, but I, I think it's, it's worth saying that having something in a container does provide a covering and does provide a roof over, over the material, but does not necessarily make it into a building or a warehouse. And I hope I didn't confuse it further, but I was trying to offer some clarification.
No, thank you. The, the, a couple of other just quick points. It was, I guess, the, we need to be careful, I know people, I find that interesting as well, that nobody complied with the, or, I shouldn't say nobody complied, but that there were no nonconform, conforming use permits. That was something, or applications made, that was something where there were three years provided to do that. And I'm not sure, again, though, we have to bear in mind that if we're going, we've got to figure out where we are on these diverging paths. We've got two different arguments. It's not just throw everything out there and see what works, we've got to kind of pick one. And one is, it's lawful, the other is, it's not lawful, but it's a lawful, nonconforming use. The two completely different paths. So need to be mindful of sorting that out. But the, the law setting that up is, that's something that cities, and I didn't research this and cite examples, but cities across the country did, was a common thing to set up these nonconforming use registrations, kind of out of the '08 financial was a common thing to set up these nonconforming use registrations coming out of the '08 financial crisis because of lending standards being tightened. There needed to be some way, and legislative history backed this up, there needed to be some way to say, look, we can't always be arguing retroactively about what was going on. We've got to find a baseline. So what we'll do is we'll develop a baseline. You apply for this thing, you put forth your arguments, your evidence, it gets decided, there's an appeal, right, if you don't get it. And then at some point, we will have a list, a concrete list of those properties, which although today they wouldn't be in conformance because they have this nonconforming use that was decided, here's the list, then we'll have, we'll be able to avoid this kind of argument in this kind of room on the fly. And the fact that nobody did it, you know, again, if, if everybody, there's a lot of this unfairness, and I've cited the unfairness argument, I've cited the legal standards, they're very high. I've been doing this kind of work for 15 years and every person, rate, I shouldn't say every, but it is incredibly common, well, you, there's a zoning code, but everybody in my neighborhood seems to be doing the same thing. Why are you picking on me? It's resources. There's, there is limited, it's not Gnome, it's statewide, it's everywhere. There is a limited amount of resources for enforcement. That does not make any one enforcement action unlawful any more than it does pulling the person over who's going 60 in the 45, even though 100 people did it right before them. It, that doesn't change it. There's no evidence in the record that would make this, that I'm aware of. There's an argument, a hint that maybe there was a dispute with a former manager, but that's hinted at, but there's nothing that really meets that legal standard. Cities are just trying to enforce its code. So I just ask you to, a couple of things. One, if, if that argument is of interest, please read the briefing on the legal standards with what actually needs to be proven and the burden of proof. And also with this argument that it is a valid present use versus nonconforming use, we've got to find some clarity on that. I think the two arguments are, you know, they're incompatible. Go ahead.
Sam, could you clarify or maybe help me give an example of the law, if, if the council were to say that, yep, this is just a lawful approved use, then I guess when I think about a property out there, there's like open space, right? And there's kind of this appeal to emotion of, well, okay, all right, there's not a lot going on. But then in theory could, would, if it was lawful, in theory, somebody could buy the lot next door here in downtown Gnome, and as long as they put two Conexes on it or three Conexes, then they could fill the rest with broken down vehicles or, or things along that line. And as long as they call it something, then that would be, like, that could potentially be perfectly acceptable in anywhere that's zone city or zone commercial, rather.
I mean, that person could...
Or anybody, I mean, I just mean, anybody else could in a commercial area.
I mean, if you made a finding in this case, they, and then tried to bring a subsequent enforcement action, that person would be wise to probably go back and say, well, you decided that in 2025. Whether that is legally binding is an altogether different question, I think, but is that going to be very persuasive and potentially problematic? Yes, I think so, you know. I hope that...
Yeah, no, and then is the non, you described as lawful, nonconforming. There was a sunset date on that, right, to initially apply?
Yeah, it was, it was 2018, which my understanding predates...
Yeah, there was just some discussion about whether people knew about this or whether anybody has, but the deadline for that has come and gone a long time ago.
Right, right. It was, if I have my, I mean, the documents are there, but I believe it was initiated in 2015, I think, that section of the code, and then designed a sunset in 2018. So there's no way that anybody working here now, I mean, maybe somebody would apply, I don't know, and ask, plead for, I missed it, I don't know what the city would do then. But yeah, the deadline was six years ago, or seven years ago now. So nobody today would presumably see one of those. Yeah.
I just want to read the definition in the City of Gnome zoning code for outdoor storage. And it says means the keeping in an unroofed area of any goods, material, merchandise, vehicles for under 20 hours. Unroofed. And, you know, whenever there's questions or disagreements about, you know, whether something is lawful or not, what do we do? We all go back to the ordinance or we go back to the zoning code. And when you look at the zoning code, it specifically defines outdoor storage as an unroofed area. Doesn't say how big it is. It doesn't say if it's a Conex or a 40,000 square foot heated warehouse with concrete floors. It says unroofed. That's the definition that we have to look at. It says unroofed. The other, so I guess that's just my, my point about the Conexes and warehouse and things like that. I suspect, as somebody who's lived here close to 30 years, I, you know, I vaguely remember the, the discussion, and I vaguely remember the Perkins, I think it was Perkins Garage, the, the one nonconforming use application that was made. I suspect that the, you know, the ordinance or the, or the, you know, it was passed in 2015 and then, I'm guessing, and again, it's just an assumption, that the city never communicated and said, hey, do you know that the deadline is coming up? And it's, it came and went. And that's why there's literally no applications on file for these nonconforming uses. And does that mean that every single nonconforming use of any property that may exist because there are no nonconforming use applications on file with the city or approvals, does that mean we're going to start seeing a lot of these? And I, and I understand the argument about, you know, well, you know, enforcement is not, you know, fair, or it's, you know, it picks on certain people because of lack of resources or whatever. But, you know, I think it's a fair argument or concern is, are we going to be seeing a lot more of those because we are now saying, regardless of no conforming applications being on file with the city, does that mean every, where, every commercial business that is in a residential area or in a general use area without the appropriate zoning approvals, that we're going to be looking at this on a regular basis? I, I think it's, it's, it's worth thinking about.
I'd say the answer to your question is, right, there could potentially be a lot of other issues out there. I don't think that we would necessarily see them because I think most people would work with the city to get in compliance. And, and a reoccurring theme through all of this is that the city is open for business, the city is looking to work with people. There's just this disagreement of, of, again, as it was pointed out, the two divergent paths and...
I'm not going to debate, I'm just asking a question.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mark.
Along that discussion, I did hear Mr. Burnham testify that he did inquire about when it's brought up, okay, how do I comply? And he did inquire about, if necessary, get a nonconforming permit, and was told by city staff that there's no sense, that basically he would not, they would not be granted. So, you know, I think that, that part of the issue is, we're trying to implement a zoning program, which has been in place for many, many years, and we don't have a lot of people participating in it because either they didn't know about it, or they basically figured, okay, it's been that way for a long time and we don't, we're not required to do anything differently. But if you have someone that's willing to try to comply and come within zoning things by having a viable business or, or applying for the thing, then we should certainly open our arms to be able to be able to do that.
Just a, thank you. Point of clarity, I think, was that conversation about, I think we have a couple of different things now, right? That was about a conditional use permit as opposed to a nonconforming use, correct?
That's, that's correct.
Okay. No argument. I'm just trying to make sure we're keeping things tracked straight. Thank you.
So if there's, are there any further questions from the council at this point? And the next step is, do you have another question?
And I don't know if you, this, this question is directed to the city. Is it the city's position that the only way that Mr. Burnham, as his lot currently sits with all the stuff on it, the only way that he will qualify for a compliance agreement or a nonconforming use permit or whatever, is that everything on his lot has to be under a roof? Is that the city's position?
Aaron, do, I mean, I...
Yeah, I can, I can take a stab at it. I think no. So I think if, if, if Mr. Burnham were to construct a warehouse where that material can be stored inside, inside of a warehouse, that would be one approach. Another approach would be to have a business located there that is clearly the primary use of the property so that the outdoor storage, the unroofed storage is, is secondary and ancillary and supporting of that primary use. So those are a couple of different ways that I can see a path. The removal of some of the, what's being stored there now would be another approach. But if you're asking how to continue using the property for the most part as how it's used now, or is, I think those would be the two primary approaches.
So if he had a storefront or an office?
Right, right. And I think that's where, you know, not, I think that's where we kind of get into that initial enforcement letter, you know, like I think that there was an effort there to try to, you know, look at code and figure out other ways that you could have storage, you know, so, and that was part of the intent behind there, yeah.
But it sounds like the city and Mr. Burnham have not, for whatever reason, sat down and had that conversation about what a potential, you know, conditional use permit or a compliance agreement would look like. We, it just, that hasn't happened.
Right, and that was certainly, yeah, that's correct. I think other conversations have been happening. I understand you could maybe speak to some of that.
Yeah, I can briefly. And I want to be careful, Miss Stone will interrupt me, but I mean, the, the parties through their attorneys made an effort to have that conversation about avoiding the appeal by some kind of agreement, and it did not bear fruit. And beyond that, I think it's just not probably fair to either party to really get into the details of why. We just generally don't discuss settlement type things and, you know, the details of it. But the effort, I think, Miss Stone and I both, I think, made a good faith effort to confer regarding that possibility.
All right. Any more questions from the council? So then the next step in the process?
Would be to give, I think, the way we, the way we had it laid out was that, that Miss Stone, on behalf of Mr. Burnham, would also have the opportunity to give a rebuttal or be asked questions.
Thank you. And I will, I will try to be brief. I reject the argument about an alternative argument being permissible in this case. The city has come with an enforcement letter saying that Mr. Burnham's use does not conform to the city code. We wholly disagree with that because the definition of outdoor storage means unroofed. So logically, the definition of indoor storage means roofed. It doesn't say warehouse, storage in a warehouse, it says warehouse and storage. So as we've set forth and I think is understood, our argument is that the use is indeed permissible because there is storage and then there's the accessory use of outdoor storage. Like, council for the city previewed that there are items that are not necessarily before this body right now because they are not proper to be raised. However, in the alternative, if this is deemed to be a nonconforming use, the question will be, was there due process with regard to the grandfathering in of those nonconforming use rights? Because as a government entity, if you are going to restrict private property, then there are certain thresholds that must be met. And that is a question that if the, if the issue today is not reversed, will be left with the courts to decide if indeed the city did provide the proper notice. I will just say there were questions about what precedent does this set. I think under the appeal factors, when you look at those factors that are considered, it's looking at a totality of the circumstances and the facts as they are set forth in this case. Each case will likely present a unique case, but here we have Al Vezey in 2006 submitted his Army Corps permit saying that he was going to have a storage pad with Conexes on the property for storage. And the Conexes, 3,200 square feet, remain on the property. And as an accessory use, there's also outdoor storage. Therefore, we maintain that the use is compliant with the code and we respectfully request that the council overturn the enforcement letter.
All right. Thank you very much.
So you're, it's yours and you want to make a decision on, you can deliberate and...
Is executive session appropriate?
Yeah, it would be. If you, if you want to do that, it'd be a deliberative session of a quasi judicial body, so be free to do that. Yeah. Right, right. You could come out and make the decision and it just, and tell you, you know, often we, the city attorneys are in those. I will not be. I don't think that's appropriate in this context, going back to my role here as advocate in this instance. So it would be the council and I think, I think really just the council. I think anybody else needs to be in it. And then you come out and make a decision. And when you do so, if you take a vote, make a decision, and please give reasons because we need a record of the rationale to have that. And what I would probably do is, is come back with findings of fact and conclusions so that we have a written record of that.
All right, so you deliberate and then make a motion. Clerk can advise on the motion when time comes.
Need a motion to go into executive session, Mr. Mayor?
Let's second that motion.
Okay. A motion has been made and seconded to go into executive session. Is there discussion allowed? Any discussion on the motion? None? Call a roll. On the motion to go into executive session. Must state a reason. The reason...
On Mr. Burnham's appeal.
All right.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yes.
Councilmember Marson?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Lust?
Yes.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Motion carries. We will be recessing into executive session. It will stand at ease for five minutes while the room prepares.
Oh, there's Erin. Was Ms. Stone coming back, I guess?
I just texted her. Yeah, she, I just texted her, Ms. Stone, to let her know.
I just unlocked the meeting, so.
Okay, excellent.
And Erin's back on.
There's Ms. Stone. There's Ms. Stone.
All right.
All right, we'll call the meeting back to order at 8:56 PM. The chair will entertain a motion.
Sounds like Cliff's coming down.
That's Cliff. Do you want the clerk to restate?
There's no motion yet, or, yeah.
I'd make the motion to grant the appeal of Mr. Joe Burnham.
A second.
Okay, motion by Mr. Counselperson Lust, seconded by Councilmember Green to grant Mr. Burnham's appeal. Is there any further discussion? All right.
Roll call?
Roll call.
Okay. Councilmember Marson?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Lust?
No.
Councilmember Henderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah.
Motion carries. The appeal is granted. Thank you very much for your time. The next item of business is citizens' comments. Are there any citizens that wish to comment? State your name for the record.
Citizen, I think you all made the correct decision here.
I would have loved to see unanimous vote on that, but I understand that we all have our own convictions. Have a good night.
Citizens' comments. Just to state your name.
Joe Burnham. I understand y'all granted my appeal. I'm not familiar with this process. What happens now?
Well, that's kind of up to you.
How so?
So, your appeal has been granted, which means that the...
I can go ahead and apply for a building permit and put a building up and do my thing?
There you go.
Okay. Thank you very much, all of you. And I'll still donate that $5,000 for that PA system because I couldn't hear from back there.
Get a check, bring it to me. I'll put a system in quick.
I'll do it for you. Thank you. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you. Any further citizen comments?
Thomas Simonson, a citizen. Oh, no. Would be interesting to hear the reasoning from the council members if anyone wanted to give that. And, yeah, interested in hearing more about Conexes, if that's warehouses, or just the Conex, and what kind of application that might have on property taxes and taxes and such. Thank you.
Any more citizen comments? Anyone on Zoom or phone? Nope. All right. Then we'll move on to the next item on the agenda is utility managers' report. There's...
Nothing.
Blank.
We don't have anything submitted.
Okay. City managers' report, item made.
Yes. Quick, quick. I do, I've given you something in writing. I do want to, and we'll be talking to you more about some of the tax conference that Dan and I went to last week, and I think it was very well done. The big thing we found out is a lot of our, a lot of our issues and lack of revenue is the high extent of exemptions, that we leave a lot on the table, and then talking to other communities from around the state, they don't have the exemptions that we have. So, we have money on the table that, that's why I want to go in and do audits of business and personal property, but also to look at the implications and bring you numbers of exemptions of businesses in town. We're just finding that the money's on the table. So, we're going to bring you that as part of the menu. And Councilman Johnson, the syntax, you know, we've talked about that with marijuana, cigarettes, alcohol. That was, everybody seems to have it, you know, and we've just not looked at that as closely. So, we're going to be bringing that to, to you guys in November. I do want to mention, when I say Robert's Rules of Order, I've seen some conflicts on different commissions and boards and committees as to what do we adhere to when it comes to our parliamentary procedures. And if it is Robert's rules, then one of the thing I'll be bringing back to you, I'll be talking to council about stating that all of our committee's commissions will utilize a process, so we're consistent. And if it's Robert's rules, whatever you guys choose, but I'd like to bring something back. Animal services, we definitely have to do an overhaul on it, but I may get some, even do like a meeting with some folks out of the community to talk about what they want to see in animal services, so. The last thing is on the towing ordinance. You know, when we're doing snow clearing, utility changes, vehicles and things in the right-of-way, you know, one of the things that we're really concerned about, our folks who move snow, is that when you have vehicles that are in the right-of-way, they pile it with snow, kids are darting out, you can't see. They're not supposed to be there. We cannot clear roads without or with, you know, side-by-sides, four-wheelers, cars. So, I'm going to be bringing to you an ordinance that would allow us to remove in the right-of-way vehicles, equipment, so that we can probably, properly, or properly actually, you know, maintain roads, right-of-ways, to move snow, whatever it is. So, I'll be bringing something back to you. That's a major problem for us. And the guys have, and gals have said it's, it's a big issue for them. So, we're going to be coming back to you. I will also say, I gave you, and it was in the paper about text my gov alerts. So, if you haven't already signed up, we're going to be doing some marketing. So, when there is an emergency or a missing person, whatever, you'll be getting quick updates on your cell phone. So, all you have to do is go to 91896. So, all you have to do is go to 91896 and put Nome Emergency in, and you, it will automatically sign you up. We're going to be going to churches, community center, rec center, and getting people to sign up. So, for the listeners, folks on YouTube and the folks here, please, you know, get people to sign up for this so we can send information out. In the winter, we're going to actually add some things where people, if you have an animal services issue, you go on there and text it. A pothole, take a picture, text it. So, we're going to be adding to this, but we need to get all of our folks lined up. And that's just not in the city proper, but going out towards ICBU, anyone in this area, get them to sign up. This is going to be our primary way to communicate when it comes to emergencies. So, I think we, I might try to get with KNOM and some others to do some video of this is how you do it. It is very, folks have done it, said this was easy. So, please try and do that. This is, that can save lives. I know we had some issues again with these last two. Thank God, we, you know, did well in comparison to a lot of these communities around the state that did not do well. We're very blessed. But lots of you had just gotten this, the same thing, and it really helped them get information out. So, you know, please get people to sign up for the emergency alerts. We're going to have some different groups. I know we're going to, for instance, volunteers. If someone wants to volunteer during an emergency, we'll have a volunteer group. So, there's a multitude of ways to use this, but please, please sign up. So, that's really everything we have for my office. I am asking for a really quick executive session later on personnel.
Regarding the towing ordinance?
Yep.
What are we going to move them with?
Well, that's part of what we're discussing right now. How, you know, because...
Because we looked at getting a wrecker.
Or, yeah, a wrecker or a flatbed.
Two years ago, and then I think there was, the council was wanting to explore, is there any private sector folks that would be interested in doing that, to provide that service?
There's at least two. Have said they, they would contract.
Okay. All right. So, there is options in the community. Okay.
Yeah.
Who's it?
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, Mark.
Follow-up question for city manager. You mentioned about new ordinance for removing vehicles and whatnot off the streets for snowpalling. And I know that's been an issue for probably as long as we've had roads. And is there not something already in ordinance or already in code that could, that...
There's something there, but that's why I want to go to the attorneys and clean it up. I've got a couple of issues that we need to tighten it up. It's how some thing, like earlier, how things are defined. So, I'll be going to, to the attorneys and getting something and coming back to you because snow's coming quick.
And then one other quick follow-up. I think you mentioned offline at some point that you've been working on the outdoor basketball courts. Could you, could you let us know what you're working towards?
Yeah, I've actually applied today for $250,000. We're hitting on the grants. We can get this is for, there is a need for outdoor basketball, pickleball, those kind of things, and that we could do it at the recreation center site. So, you know, we're looking at do like a little preliminary engineering report of where it could go. But we know we can control it there, but there's been a lot of requests for the outdoor sports as far as basketball and thing. And we could accommodate more folks too, so, and kids. And so, it would be a multi-purpose, you know, area, but mainly for basketball and of course, pickleball. That's a, well, you know, people love pickleball. So, but we're looking for grants to accomplish that, so. Looking for a lot of grants. Yeah, thank you.
Okay.
Any other questions for the city manager? Okay, not hearing any. We'll move on to council members' comments.
Roll call. Mission, old habits. Councilmember Lust?
Yeah, at the beginning of the meeting, I just want to thank Mr. Patrick Knodel for his willingness to continue serving on the NJUS Board. And I see there's some other commissioner appointments coming up. But thank you to those in the community that are willing to serve, and there are many other commissions that have vacancies. So, people in the community, we need thoughtful folks putting in for those. That's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Marson?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
Since I wasn't, I was in the plane in the last meeting, wasn't able to attend, I just wanted to say congratulations to Councilman Lust there for, for winning and for, for joining the council, and appreciate that you're willing to serve. And also, congratulations to our new mayor, Mr. Hughes. Good to have some new folks on board, and I think that's really going to help a lot. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Miller?
I'm interested in continuing our conversation on taxis, licenses, cabs, et cetera. Other than that, I don't have any comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Green?
Well, yeah, I wanted to see if we can work more on this ordinance, see if there's anything that can go forward on it, see what I can do.
Absolutely. Thank you. Councilmember Henderson?
Long meeting tonight. I appreciate everybody sticking around. You know, the discussion we had tonight kind of, I think we'll continue, whether it's this particular issue or others, as we try to grapple with the realities of zoning. You know, there are some folks in the community that don't like zoning at all. They like to be able to do what they want with their property. There are others that support zoning, and, you know, it's just going to be one of these issues that's going to continue to come up as we look at development and the future. And so, you know, the decisions tonight are not fun. I don't think anybody on the council enjoys making these kinds of decisions when there's disagreement in the community over what somebody can and can't do with their property and what they think is, you know, attractive or not attractive. So, I just think this is part of our future because we do have zoning, and we just have to take these issues on one at a time as they come up. My suggestion to Mr. Burnham is when a city building inspector calls you, you be nice. It's not against the law to be a jerk.
Yes.
Don't be a jerk.
We've seen, we've seen it get along here lately. Don't we, Cliff?
Yeah, so far, so good.
All ready?
Mr. Hughes? I guess I'll start with the ordinance?
These, I can just read them?
Yes, sir.
They're, all right.
And if they're here at request, then we do, we swear them. For those that haven't already been serving and don't already have those.
All right. Okay. I'll be appointing Melissa Ford to seat A of the Nome Planning Commission for a three-year term. She's already been serving on the Planning Commission for, for a term. I'll be appointing Drew McCann to seat B of the Nome Planning Commission for a three-year term. He was previously serving on the Port Commission and decided he wanted to move to the Planning Commission. We are appointing John Oden to seat D of the Nome Planning Commission for the remaining of a three-year term that expires 10/1/2026. He was, had previously served a three-year term that had expired. I'll be appointing Ryan Brooker to seat F of the Nome Planning Commission for the remaining of a three-year term which expires 10/1/2027. And I'll be appointing Harvey Farley to seat D of the Nome Port Commission for a three-year term. I see you're here. If you want to come up and swear again, beg your pardon?
You can motion to approve all your appointments.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve all of the appointments listed here, including Melissa Ford, Drew McCann, John Oden, Ryan Gray, Booker, and Harvey Farley.
Okay. A motion by Councilmember Henderson, seconded by Councilmember Green. May I call a roll?
Councilmember Harrison?
Yes.
Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah.
Councilmember Marson?
Yes.
Councilmember Green?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Lust?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you.
Mr. Harvey, if you could please come forward. This is a copy for you to be able to follow along so that some of the words I stumble over.
Yes.
And so, definitely helps us both. Please raise your right hand. I?
I, Harvey Farley.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
The laws of the state of Alaska?
The laws of the state of Alaska?
And the ordinances of the municipality of Nome?
And the ordinances of the municipality of Nome?
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my ability?
The best of my ability.
Honestly and faithfully discharge?
Honestly and faithfully discharge.
The duties of my office of Port Commissioner?
The duties of my office of Port Commissioner.
Without fear?
Without fear.
Favor or partiality?
Favor or partiality.
And therein do ever justice?
And therein do ever justice.
To all persons and to the city?
To all persons and to the city.
So, help, so help me God.
So, help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, I'd just like to say thank you for all the support from my family and from my, for my former parents, my mom and dad. My dad was honored to serve the city, and I am so honored also. Thank you.
And to continue my comments, it would be to say that we are still looking for more folks for the Port and the Planning Commission. So, if there's anyone out there interested, stop by the city office or download a form, let us know, and we'll give you all due consideration. It's been a long meeting. Y'all probably hear plenty from me in the upcoming, in the future, so I'll just refrain from any further comments tonight. Other than a genuine thank you to everyone that's here tonight and everyone listening in. Really appreciate your care and concern about the city of Nome and about how we can all come together to make Nome a better place. So, thank you all for your time and attention. And leave the next item on the agenda as an executive session for personnel administrative related issues.
You will not take action during or after this meeting? No action is anticipated after.
Okay. No action is anticipated afterwards? There's a motion and a second?
First second.
Okay.
I got it?
Yep.
To move to executive session, I presume? Yeah. All right.